It's a lively crowd. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Information on how to watch, attend, and participate, as well as agendas, minutes, and recordings can be found at Broomfield's website at broomfield.org/councilmeetings. Public comment is welcome in person or through our call-in service. Instructions for calling in are available on the council meeting's webpage. Public comment will be limited to 90 minutes total per item. The first 1 through 15 participants in the queue have three minutes to speak. The next 16 through 25 have two minutes, and if time remains, the next 26-plus participants in the queue have one and a half minutes, one minute to speak. For our hard-of-hearing residents present, we have wireless headsets available in the back of the council chambers from our AV team. The city council regular meeting is called to order. Councilmember Lim is absent, and Councilmember Marsh Holson is attending remotely. There are nine council members in attendance, and a quorum of the council is present. We begin this meeting by acknowledging that we gather on the ancestral and unceded lands of the Arapaho-Chayenne Ute and other Native peoples. Indigenous peoples have cared for this land for generations and continue to maintain deep cultural and spiritual ties to it. As the city and county of Broomfield, we recognize the responsibility to honor this legacy and the enduring presence of Native communities. May this acknowledgement inspire action that fosters greater understanding, truth, and respect for Indigenous peoples. Will everyone please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In an effort to keep order for tonight's meeting, I ask council members to limit their comments to five minutes. If council members are given an opportunity to speak for a second time, they should limit their comments to two minutes. We'll plan on a 10-minute break at approximately 8:00 p.m. We will begin with council's review and approval of this evening's agenda. Council may add or remove items from the consent agenda, or council may revise the order of business for the meeting. Deputy City, oh, this script's a little weird. Does any council member have any, any, any problems with this agenda? I'm winging it. All right. Are there any objections to this agenda being approved?
Mayor.
Oh, wait. Oh, 6E. I forgot about 6E. Thank you.
Thank you.
I forgot, and we talked about it recently. Excuse me, y'all. Deputy City and County Manager Burton Zetti, do you have an update on an agenda item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a little unusual. One of the consent agenda items, 6E, regarding the assignment of the private activity bonds, after the publication of the memorandum at the very end of last week, we were, we got contacted by a potential affordable housing developer. So we would kindly request that this item be removed from consideration this evening. We'll bring it back in early September after our staff has had an opportunity to meet with this developer.
Sounds great. Thank you, Deputy Manager Burton Zetti. Item 6E will be removed. Does any member of the council have any other comments or questions regarding this agenda? Are there any objections to this agenda being approved as modified without item 6E? Saying none, the agenda is approved. The first item under petitions and communications this evening is a proclamation declaring September 2025 as National Suicide Prevention Month. Will the representatives here to accept the proclamation, please make their way over to the podium? And I'll now summarize the proclamation. Mental health remains a top concern for Broomfield residents, and while suicide deaths are beginning to decline locally, continued investment in prevention is vital. Broomfield Public Health and Environment leads population-level programs and strategies to prevent suicides, including data surveillance, youth risk and protective factors, public education, partnerships, through and thorough promoting equitable access to support. It does take a village, as you can see. Many partners in Broomfield address suicide prevention, including mental health providers, school groups, first responders, local nonprofits, and area hospitals. Residents are encouraged to use Colorado's 988 Mental Health Line for 24/7 assistance for themselves or someone they care about. Therefore, as mayor, I hereby declare and proclaim September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Month in Broomfield. Would our representatives like to make any remarks?
Yes, we would. Thank you so much, City Council and our mayor and mayor pro temp for declaring September as Suicide Prevention Month in Broomfield. We really appreciate the opportunity to bring awareness to suicide and all that we can do as a community to prevent it from happening to our family, our friends, and our neighbors. It really does take a community, as we said, to prevent suicide. And while suicide is a problem that we want to continue to focus on, we have seen deaths due to suicide decrease in Broomfield in recent years, so we're glad to see that happen. Tonight, we want to recognize all the people and organizations that are behind me that are working towards suicide prevention. So it's not just public health, it's really all of us to address this complex problem. First, I'd like to thank our first responders for their courageous efforts as primary responders to suicide attempts and crises. We have our Broomfield Police Department and our co-responder program here tonight with us. We also have North Metro Fire Department here with us tonight. We have Josh Hamilton, Chief Matt O'Leary, and Chief Matt Haran. Our hospitals also help promote safe firearm storage, and they participate in the Zero Suicide Initiative. This evening, we have UC Health present, Karen Stewart, who is the board president, Ziamara Sanchez, and Ryan Roman, who is the president of the Broomfield Hospital. We also want to acknowledge all of the treatment providers that provide suicide treatment that is really critical for our youth and our adults. Present tonight with Rise Against Suicide is Monica Von Hoff. We also have the Hope Institute, and present is Benjamin Finlayson. And Clinica Family Health and Wellness, we have Kate Parker present. And lastly, if some of you were aware, we had a Day of Empowerment that was hosted by a community member this year that really brought awareness to suicide prevention, and that community member here tonight is Mercy Manresa. And lastly, our schools have the wonderful Sources of Strength Program at both of our high schools, Legacy and Broomfield High School. Tonight, we have representatives from Broomfield High School, Annie Engelmann, and the students, Rachel, Ava, and Brogan. Before we wrap up for tonight, we have invited one of our Broomfield churches here to share about why suicide prevention has been important to them. So I'd like to introduce our First Mong Baptist Church pastor, Pastor Tao, to share a little bit about that.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Pastor Tao, and I serve at First Mong Baptist Church. It's an honor to stand here with you today as we proclaim together the importance of suicide prevention in our community. Just recently, our Mong community experienced the deep heartbreak of losing a loved one. That loss that left many of us with question, with grief, and with the desire to respond in a way that could bring hope and healing. One of the ways we responded was by offering the QPR Suicide Prevention Training to our community. Through the support of Broomfield Health, 58 people from the Mong community came to be trained. For many, it was the first time they had ever received or heard of such a training, and to recognize the warning signs and to know how to step in and help. I believe that training has already begun to make a difference. It gave our community the confidence to not remain silent when they see someone struggling with the thought of taking their own life, but to ask the hard question and to listen with compassion and to connect a person to the help they need. In our culture, we're talking about mental health has not always been easy. QPR opened the door for honest conversation and practical action. The good news is that this training is not just for one group of people, it's for everyone. Through the Broomfield Community Initiate Care Program, QPR training was made available to us free of charge, including childcare and even pizza for everyone. And believe me, there was many children that the parents brought. So suicide prevention knowledge is not just for professional, it is the work of family, friends, and faith communities. So together, we can build a culture where every life is valued, every cry for help is heard, and no one should go through it alone. So thank you for allowing me to share today, and may we continue to stand together and to bring hope and life to our community. We want to express our thanks to our Broomfield Health Partners, Deb Zoe, Marco, and especially Kelsey Warren, for, you know, for the training that she helped us put together, and the training team for making this QPR training possible. Thank you.
I'm going to present the proclamation. Can we make more copies for everybody? Thank you all, all that you do. We really appreciate you being here to represent that, and we just owe you so much. Thank you very much. Comment on this item? Please make your way to the podium. We do allow public comments, so any of you, please step on up.
Hi, I'm Mercy. I wasn't planning to say anything, but one thing that I have learned over the last few months in being approached by the Live Project to do a screening of the movie My Sister Live here in Broomfield is to not be afraid of speaking about suicide openly and publicly. It is one of the things that can help prevent it. And when you come into a room like this, if I were to ask the room, how many of you have been affected by suicide, by your own thoughts, by the loss of somebody that you knew, by a youth in your life? Probably if anybody's willing to raise their hand. If you are, please do. When you look around, almost everybody in this room has been affected by suicide. It is important to just talk about it, to help our youth and our friends and our family know they are not alone, that we all struggle. We all hit those dark parts, and there are people and resources here to support you. And I am so incredibly blessed to live here for all the support that I received to put on that event, and many of you are here, so thank you, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mercy. Would anyone else like to comment on this item? Open mic. Not, I will go to council. Any questions from council or comments? Councilmember Henkel?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for being here tonight. This just shows what a collaboration it is to really care about your neighbor and even care about people that you don't know, you just met. So our first responders, and then even within our first responders, within yourselves, to take care of each other, I feel like that is really important. There's been a lot of news lately about how our first responders are heavily affected by the work that they do. And it is vital and very important to understand that it affects all generations. We, I personally have been helping refugees, and our number one priority is mental health. So we have done mental health first aid classes. We do it with our students. I'm active in Adams 12 as well. They have really great programs within those, the school systems. But ultimately, we have to know that this crosses cultures, this crosses generations, and this definitely is an important role, no matter where we are. And I think it's great. Thank you, Mercy, for your words. I think it's really good to normalize the fact that we need to talk about it, and we're not going to be dealing with shame anymore, because shame is, is not where, you know, we need to be. So thank you all for being here. Thank you for all of your work. So when you think about the work that you do, think of the people in this room who are behind you, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Winn?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to also say thank you so much for y'all being here as well. From, you know, educators, first responders, religious leaders, city and public health officials, and including, you know, community leaders, students. I think we all can recognize that, you know, it's, it's impossible to explain the, the why. Why would people take their life? And so, you know, National Prevention Month is, is important to recognize that, you know, this happens not just one month, it happens year-round, 365 days. And so I think it is urgent that we recognize that there is a healthcare crisis and that people's mental health with lots of distressors, a lot of concerns with, you know, the current state of the world and in our communities, it's important to recognize that there's a community here that is willing to speak up and support one another. So I really resonate with the comment of the Tixah Village, because it really does. So thank you all. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Leslie?
Thank you, Mayor. My colleagues said it better than I can, but having spent my career as a college president and administrator, and sadly seeing too many students taking their own lives, I know personally how important it is for everyone to gather around together. Pastor, I really appreciate your words. I appreciate the fact that you were given the kind of training that you think is going to help your community. First responders, I've worked with firefighters and police officers all my career, and again, I know firsthand some of the, the stress and the challenges that you face as well. So I just want to add my voice to thanking all of you. The point, of course, is it's not just tonight, it's every day. And so the work is just something that we all have to be involved in. So thank you so much again for your work.
Thank you. And I just, yeah, to, to wrap it up, thank you for bringing attention to this important topic and for all the work you do to prevent suicides in our community. Thank you all again. And let our office know if you want more copies of the proclamation for your organization. We're happy to provide them. Next, we have a proclamation declaring September 2025 as Workforce Development Month. Will the representatives here to accept the proclamation, please come up to the podium area once our other group makes room? And as you're gathering, I'll thank you for joining us this evening, and I'll now summarize the proclamation. The city and county of Broomfield recognizes the importance of workforce development and preparing residents with the skills and education needed for the future work. Through no-cost services, the Broomfield Workforce Center helps individuals access employment opportunities and career advancement while supporting employers in building strong talent pipelines. Collaboration across businesses, government, and community partners is essential, and Workforce Development Month highlights the value of these efforts and the professionals who make them possible. Therefore, as mayor, I hereby declare and proclaim September 2025 as Workforce Development Month in Broomfield, and invite all residents, businesses, and community organizations to use this month to acknowledge the significance of workforce development and to support efforts to enhance the skills and opportunities of our local workforce, leading to a prosperous, prosperous future for all of Broomfield. And now I'll turn it over you, to you to make some remarks.
Thank you so much. Mayor, Mayor Pro Temp, city council members, on behalf of the Broomfield Workforce Center, thank you so much for the proclamation. Each September, the Broomfield Workforce Center celebrates Workforce Development Month by honoring our customers, both job seekers and employers, and recognizing our dedicated workforce team who work daily to create opportunities for others. And workforce development, we believe a job is so much more than a paycheck. It's a pathway to purpose, growth, and the opportunity to truly thrive. The Broomfield Workforce Center supports the economic landscape and workforce development in Broomfield and surrounding areas by connecting businesses to skilled job seekers. We celebrate the diversity of the human experience, and all, and all people who want to work can contribute to our vibrant community. Through our no-cost services, the Broomfield Workforce Center is committed to working with our customers to identify education and training opportunities and needs. We assist all job seekers in getting their ideal, sustainable wage job, and we can help translate past experience to relevant responsibilities. Here are just a few comments we've heard in the last year from our customers. My caseworker was extremely helpful in guiding my decision, making process for, making process for the next steps in my career and the work I need to do to get there. Thank you to the Broomfield Workforce Center for all, for all of the guidance. I'm excited for the next steps. Another comment, judgment-free services during vulnerable times is a must, and you have nailed it. Thank you for providing quality services and assistance with fleshing out thoughts and showing a pathway to a better quality of life. It is very appreciated. And the final comment I'll share with you, the resources I've been made aware of because of the help from folks like my caseworker at Broomfield Workforce have been instrumental in turning my life around. Sorry, I just feel very passionate about my job and the people I work with. So our workforce specialist tailor services to meet each job seeker where they are at in their employment journey, as every job seeker is unique and may require a different approach and set of services. Our team works hard to ensure that our customers seeking employment have the resources they need to thrive now and in the future. The Broomfield Workforce Center relies on our associate, associates, the Broomfield Economic Vitality Office, the Broomfield Chamber of Commerce, to determine which skills are most needed for today and in the future. We value our community partners, including the Broomfield Library, Coal Creek Adult Education, FISH, The Refuge, The Community Foundation, and A Precious Child. We also want to take a moment to thank our Broomfield Workforce Board, with a special thank you to our current board chair, Brian Holinka, Coal Creek Adult Education, and Tim Strandberg, who is our outgoing, outgoing board chair, and served our board for several years. Here's, we have several events during the Workforce Development Month this, for September. I'll try to go through them fairly quickly.
Okay.
On September 4th, we have a metro area virtual career fair. Workforce is a part of a much larger system. There are workforce centers across the state of Colorado. So we're partnering with Arapaho Douglas Works, the Denver Workforce, Jefferson, Adams, and Boulder Workforce for a virtual career fair on September 4th. On September 8th, Interviewing Essentials. On September 9th, Youth Employment Law, which can be a big deal for many employers, and that is actually an employer workshop. On September 9th, Advanced Workplace Communication and Influence. September 10th, Virtual Interview Tips and Tricks in Today's World. And then on September 16th, we have an in-person metro area career fair that we do. So there's career fairs across the metro area at all the previous centers I just mentioned. We all have a job fair on the same day, so somebody could literally go to six different job fairs. On 9/17, Unlock Your Future with AI. 9/19, Resumes, Cover Letters, and References. On 9/23, Informal Discussion on Professionalism. And on 9/23, 9/23, also an employer workshop. One of our board members from Cisco is doing this. He's doing a workshop on Fair Chance Hiring Opportunities. And then on September 24th, we have another job fair, our regular monthly job fair. September 29th, we also have Strategic Career Architecture, and then Early Childhood Services Core Information Session. So in closing, I am so honored to work with this dedicated team of professionals that work at the Broomfield Workforce Center and help our residents find a pathway to work in meaningful careers. You can find out more about our services at broomfieldworkforce.org.
Thank you so much. So they can find all of the job fair palooza going on at broomfield.org/workforce?
Broomfieldworkforce.org.
Broomfieldworkforce.org.
And we will, we'll leave some flyers at the back of the room.
Perfect. Well, thank you all so much. Don't leave yet, we're going to allow public comment if anyone would like to be heard on this item. There's an opportunity for you to speak. And if not, any council comments? Councilmember Winn?
Thank you, Mayor. I hear your passion. I truly do, and I want to say thank you to your team. And every time we've had events throughout the year, I've always stopped by the workforce tent just to say hi. And I can, I do recognize that a lot of youth unemployment, a lot of folks are losing their jobs, and that this is a tough market right now. So I want to say the work you do is very important, is life-saving, and thank you. So I really appreciate the work you do. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Temp Sha?
Thank you. So I'm an educator, and we talk a lot about cradle-to-career pipeline that exists within, especially within our K-12, but, you know, even beyond that. And the scary thing is, is that when that breaks down, when that pipe breaks down, it's a little scary. You know, from what I've seen, you all provide a lot of tools to individuals that are seeking employment, that are going back into the marketplace. But what you are also serving those people is hope, and that when life gets a little dark at moments, and it gets a little bleak when you are out there with your 40th or 50th job application, you all provide a little bit of light. And to see how much care and dedication you all provide to individuals and the Broomfield community is inspiring. So thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you. Councilmember Henkel?
Thank you, Mayor. Been in there many times, and I, I know that many people in the community have been really appreciative of not only what you do, but how you meet them where they're at. So I hear in the community all the time, you know, they came and met me where I'm at, either academically and helped Upskill, or just physically, geographically, met them in a space where they could revamp their resume or understand what their options are. And I feel like the Workforce Center does that. You mentioned even an online job fair. That's, again, meeting them where they're at, and I feel like your team just really puts in above and beyond effort, and everyone would be lucky to work for our Workforce Center. I brag about you all, all the time, particularly, obviously, in the refugee circles, and a lot of other people in other cities are actually very envious of our Workforce Center. And so they know that you guys do such great work, and so thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Councilmember Dalga Dyo?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your support here at this time. It's definitely a tough job market. My day job is, is as a director of data analytics and tech, and so I have been going through the full AI revamp of my team, and it is a, it is quite a situation. So I can, it, it's definitely been tough on me to see us laying people off and doing that sort of thing, and I can only imagine how difficult it is to see that all the time from you all. So I appreciate what you do. It's a tough time, and it's definitely needed more now than at various other times. So thank you.
All right. Any other council member comments? I'm going to go ahead and present the proclamation. Thank you all so much. Keep up the great work. Check out all the events for this month. And the final item under petitions and communications this evening is a proclamation declaring September 11 through 17, 2025, as Caseworker Appreciation Week in Broomfield. Will the representatives please come up to the podium to accept the proclamation? And thank you all for joining us this evening. We have a lot of caseworkers. We need a lot of caseworkers. Caseworkers, yeah. Caseworkers in Broomfield's Child Welfare and Adult Protection Programs provide vital support to children, families, and vulnerable adults with compassion and professionalism. They lead innovative, family-centered practices, expand programs like kinship navigation, fostering success vouchers, and family-first prevention services, as well as prioritize prevention and early intervention through enhanced adult protection outreach, robust community education, and innovative prevention services designed to meet families upstream before the crisis occurs. Caseworkers serve as a critical link between vulnerable populations and the resources necessary for health, dignity, and opportunity, often working long hours necessary for health, dignity, and opportunity, often working long hours under complex and difficult circumstances to uphold justice, equity, and family unity. Caseworker Appreciation Month honors their dedication and commitment to building a stronger, safer, and more compassionate community. Therefore, as Mayor, I hereby declare and proclaim September 11th through 17th, 2025 as Caseworker Appreciation Month in Broomfield, week in Broomfield. I'd give you a month. And thank these extraordinary professionals who, who, who help our families. Would our representatives like to make any remarks?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. My name is Tiffany Ramos. I'm the Division Manager for our Children, Adult, and Family Services Division. This really is a time to celebrate the remarkable efforts of Broomfield's Child, Adult, and Family Services Division, otherwise known as CAFs. These dedicated professionals are trusted partners for individuals and families, navigating some of the life's most challenging moments, providing safety, stability, and support when it's needed the most. Their work is complex, emotionally demanding, and often unseen. Yet every day, Broomfield's team brings compassion, skill, and unwavering dedication to their roles. They are the steady, caring presence, helping children, youth, adults, and families move forward and thrive. At the heart of this work, the CAFs divisions are professionals who change lives every day. This month, we encourage everyone to take a moment to thank them and recognize the vital role they play in our community. We are proud to honor their service through caseworker appreciation proclamation, raising awareness of the positive difference they make in the lives of Broomfield residents. Let's continue to lift up and celebrate the work that truly strengthens our community.
Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to speak from our representatives? No pressure, you don't have to. That's totally fine. We do allow public comments if anyone would like to comment on this from the audience. All right, how about anyone from council? Any questions, comments? Councilmember Leslie?
Thank you all. I'd really love you to introduce yourselves. So if you wouldn't mind at the end, when we're all finished, if you wouldn't just like say your name and if you have a certain title or a certain area of, I don't know, preference or, or professional, you know, focus, I'd love to hear that.
Why not now?
I'm not ready yet.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Valerie Aparicio. I'm in the child welfare portion of CAFs and I'm one of the permanency supervisors. Thank you all for having us.
I'm Lauren DePinto. I am the lead permanency caseworker here in Broomfield.
I'm Camry Lucera. I'm a lead caseworker on our foster and kinship unit.
I'm Stephanie Estrada. I'm the lead intake caseworker.
I'm Genevieve Miller. I'm a social caseworker under the permanency division.
I'm Anita. I hate public speaking. I am the collaborative management program coordinator for the city and county of Broomfield. Thank you.
Welcome to the PR department.
I'm Elizabeth Asherick. I'm the APS CMP and prevention supervisor.
What does that mean?
Acronym. CMP is the collaborative management program and prevention. Is that what you're asking me?
Well, you said CMP and something else.
Oh, APS, yes. Adult Protective Services.
We're all learning.
I am Nicole Jimenez, caseworker intake for Broomfield.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Steele. I'm the intake supervisor.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm John Moran. I'm the adult protection caseworker.
Hi, I'm Glendrika Garcia. I'm a youth employment specialist and a GP caseworker under CAFs.
Thank you.
I'm Vanessa Bain, and I'm the admin for this group, also known as the division coach.
Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate it very much. We don't get the chance to see you and meet you, so it was really nice. And you're the smaller of the groups that have been in front of us tonight. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Henkel?
Thank you, Mayor. Look how many women are up here. And I just want to value the work that you do, not only in our community, but I'm sure at home too, because sometimes it's long hours. It's different hours too, because you're dealing with families. And I really think you guys are really the, the safety net of Broomfield. I've had to deal with some, some kinship things over the past couple of years out of Jeffco. And just to see the work that the caseworkers have to do, you know, in the Guardian Adl items and those sorts of things. I've been in many court sessions and just knowing what you all do to keep kids safe, to keep elders safe as well. You are our first responders and I want you all to know that we appreciate the work that you do.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Winn?
Thank you, Mayor. Y'all are like the unsung heroes, so to speak, in our community. The work you do is so essential and crucial to both children, to people. And I know there's a lot of work that gets, that you're the process. And I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you for the work you do and for the service that you continue to give to our community in Broomfield. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other council comments? I will just follow that up with thank you for the work that you do that bring hope All right. We'll let our folks kind of file out. We'll move on to the council member report section of the agenda. Does any member of the council have any reports or updates this evening? Anyone online? I don't see any. Okay, councilmember Winn?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to recognize and celebrate the opening of Cherry Cricket over the weekend. Many members of our community and city council members, where we will see and visit it. And it's a very good place for Lag, juicy burgers. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any, anyone else? All right then, moving on. We'll now continue with public, public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on items that aren't listed on the agenda. So if there's anyone who would like to be heard, please come up to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes,
Like to be heard?
We're hearing.
Lois Vanderkwa, Broomfield Heights. Good evening. I recently talked with a couple of people who experienced the skill and humanity of our local police and justice system. One told me of how our police worked with a woman who was, whose estranged husband was threatening her. The police were sensitive about her cultural background and provided extra safeguards for her protection. Another told me of how their mentally ill son was charged with assault due to putting cardboard in a dumpster of a local business. Her son was confronted by a young man who worked there and who went on to press charges, even though a surveillance camera recording showed the worker as being assaultive. Her son decided not to press charges, but ended up in court with a prosecutor who was not sympathetic to mental health issues. The first judge postponed the hearing and linked him up with a public defender and a Broomfield co-responder, mental health advocate. The second judge was kind in understanding of mental health issues. He talked of having a granddaughter just like him and noted the blessing of his parents' involvement. That judge dismissed the charge and encouraged further treatment. These stories brought tears to my eyes because I've worked in mental health. And there is such skill, care, and wisdom shown from those who serve our community to keep our crime rate low. No wonder we have the lowest violent crime rate per capita amongst all the cities in our region. If only federal dollars and actions helped us in other communities by supporting training of police, victim advocates, mental health professionals, community organizers, affordable housing advocates, workforce specialists, and the legal system to make policing efforts effective and humane. Instead, right now, we have a regime that forces the National Guard to wrongfully police cities run by Democrats rather than in red cities with higher crime rates. Political statement, I know. As a city and county, let's be vigilant against this authoritarian takeover and continue to operate from a place of service, justice, compassion, and skill. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Martin Dormish. I live in the Northmore Estates in Ward 1. And I'd like to start by thanking each member of council for your service. You have a challenging job. And as elected officials, I know it's not easy. Your willingness to dive into matters of budgets and costs and codes and community needs is appreciated. And I just wanted to say much peace and wisdom to each of you in this season of transition, whether you're continuing on with your terms or moving into other terms, or whether you're navigating another council election season. Additionally, I'd like to thank staff for providing support to the council and for carrying so much and for doing so in the Broomfield way. Your efforts do not go unnoticed. Looking at all of you in the back and on the side. As the coordinator of the Broomfield Sister Cities Cheyenne and Arapahoe Tribes affiliate, I'd like to thank you all as well for taking an interest in our particular partnership, for confirming it in March through our joint signing and recognition ceremony in Denver, for supporting our youth visits to Oklahoma this spring, and for supporting the Cheyenne and Arapahoe Tribes Youth and Elders Camp in Gold Hill this summer. And also for recently and officially adopting the land acknowledgement that was spoken this evening. These are all very important steps in creating common memory with our partners and remembering a chapter of our wider history as a community in which Arapahoe and other native people living in this area were forcibly displaced during the Pike's Peak Gold Rush era so that US settlers can move in. As an affiliate, we're looking forward to Broomfield Days when we will help staff a Sister Cities informational booth and welcome visiting presenters from Oklahoma. And when we'll join our fellow Broomfield Sister Cities affiliates Lalit Purinapal and Ueta Japan in presenting about our groups on the demonstration stage from 3:30 to 5:00 PM on Broomfield Days on Saturday, the 20th of September. So we hope to see you there. And then lastly, our Cheyenne and Arapahoe Tribes affiliate has been following a recent Denver effort that you may not be aware of to devote $20 million toward the design and construction of an American Indian cultural embassy. This would be a first of its kind attempt to provide both recognition and space for both visiting dignitaries from indigenous nations with official ties to the area and members of the local native community in the metro area. Those funds have been included in a bond measure that goes before Denver voters this fall. And even if that effort is successful, additional funds will likely be needed to complete the embassy. So other area communities may have the opportunity to participate. Not sure what that looks like, but just a heads up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Roxy Julah Lockmore. I know our streets and stuff need to be repaired and it's a hard job. And right now it's raining, but I've been gone for two weeks. My street has been torn up. We can't park. The street down below me has been rodomilled. It still hasn't been filled and it was rodomilled two weeks ago. Some of the other old parts of Broomfield, their streets are torn up. Nickel is torn up. I know they were doing, I think, the pipe and stuff there, but it's still, people have to drive into the other lanes and stuff to get around all the barricades and stuff that they got there. That's unsafe and that's unsatisfactory in that part. Hopefully the weather will get better, but I just think that somebody is not paying attention to these construction crews right now. Even when I tried to talk to them two weeks ago, when they first tore up our street, nobody spoke English. Not one person. So I, I don't think that's, that's something that the taxpayers should have to pay for. If you're going to have a crew out there, at least have one person out there speaking English. I don't even care if it has to be one of our employees. But anyway, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard? All right, moving on. Next, under reports, staff is going to provide the council with a semi-annual performance and internal audit update. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council and community. Joining us this evening for an enthralling report is Bernie Block. And I must say that, that Bernie's role is, is left brain and right brain and what he brings to Broomfield. No other municipal community has an internal auditor, nor do they have someone that is able to wear two different hats from a process improvement perspective and a lean perspective and change management in addition to this, in addition to his, his auditing. So looking through that filter, we are sure grateful for you, Mr. Block. Please introduce us to this item.
Thank you, city and county manager. Hupman, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members, Bernie Block. I'm here to provide an audit of the activities I've been working on since we've last met in February of this year. In December of each year, I do an annual risk assessment with input from members of management and also try to pay attention to what's going on in local governments. From that, we compile a listing of potential future audit projects and then we priority rank them. And then with feedback from city, county managers' office and city, county attorney, we develop the annual project plan, which is attachment A in your packet, attachment one, excuse me. Included in there are the listing of the performance audits. Those include audits which, excuse me. The attachment two in your packet is a status updates listing, which provides a summary of all the performance audits, findings, and recommendations, and the status of issued audits and recently implemented items. And so on the performance project plan, we have audits that have been completed or in progress, which include the overtime expense audit, the cybersecurity audit, which we bring in outside consultants with that expertise to assist with that. bring in outside consultants with that expertise to assist with that, payroll verification, and the grants administration and compliance audit. No special reviews have been done since we've last met. And the business process improvement projects, we're currently wrapping up a couple, which include the 20-day environmental letter process and severe weather activation program reporting. I also provide consultation to management and staff on internal control-related topics. I've been involved with different meetings related to the ERP process. Also, I'm involved with the external audit-related discussions. Professional development activities include working with our innovation ecosystem program. We provide a one-day innovator training, usually three to four times a year. And then later this year, we're going to do a more in-depth, four-day innovation ecosystem training that focuses on process improvement and change management-related techniques. Other activities include participation on the Strategic Planning Committee, Artificial Intelligence Steering Committee, and performing audit follow-ups. So with that, I welcome any questions or comments that you may have on any of the items in your materials.
Thank you very much, Mr. Block. We'll start with public comments. If anyone would like to comment on this item, now's the time. Questions from council are next. Councilmember Henk.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Bernie, for doing this. I know you're kind of a one-man show around here. I appreciate your work. I just had a question about, I was reading through this and kind of looking at the priority ranking. Can you walk us through what's a priority and why? What would be, you know, a medium priority versus a low priority on this list?
In terms of how they're ranked?
Yeah.
Yeah. So a high priority would be more something where there's a lack of a policy or maybe not adherence to a policy. Also, from a financial standpoint, maybe there's a higher financial potential impact or maybe a greater risk of potential fraud. Medium-level items are items where there are existing policies and maybe it's just some adjustments. Maybe the financial impact isn't as great. Lower-level items are, as you know, following along with that same suit. Yeah, they're complying with policy, maybe opportunities to make some improvements, though. So that's at a kind of a high level. And admittedly, it is a little subjective based on my feedback, but the report goes through a review process, and sometimes we adjust those based on feedback from the reviewers as well.
And then how much do we involve, like a third party or staff in determining this? And then, you know, implementation? I know we talked about the assets, and you're talking about the CIP plan and those sorts of things. So are we looking at third parties that are assisting you with this?
Other than the cybersecurity audit, I have not needed to engage a third party. If I were to take on a project where I didn't feel like I had the necessary technical skills, we would bring in someone else to assist with that.
Any other council member questions or comments on this item? Well, thank you very much for the update, Mr. Block.
Thank you. Good evening.
All right. Next, under Reports, staff is going to provide the council with an update on our Broomfield housing programs. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you. And making her way down to the podium is Sharon Tessier. She is our housing manager, and will introduce this item, walk us through it. It's a housing evening, as we have Broomfield Housing Authority up next. Ms. Tessier, welcome.
Thank you so much, City Manager Hoffman, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council. Thank you so much for this opportunity to provide you our holistic housing update. We feel very blessed to be here and look forward to sharing our report with you. Next slide, please. This is our team. This is the Economic Vitality Team. And with Robert at the helm, we've had a lot of fun, as you can see. And there's the team back there that make me a better person. So grateful for everybody's participation in truly understanding what the word "team" means. So in Economic Vitality, we have the Economic Development Team and then the Housing Team. So together, we create policies and programs as well as work with partners so that the entire spectrum of housing needs are supported, businesses are supported, and other departments like workforce and human services and senior services and partners in the community like Broomfield Fish and Habitat and BHA are all moving forward on the same mission and the same boat, rowing in the same direction. Next slide, please. The housing team has worked on taking a whole-stream approach to housing. We invest in the community by creating policies and programs as well as work with partners. The upstream approach is where long-term solutions come in. The midstream approach is recognizing individual needs and adapting programs, like expanding TIBRA to possibly a TIBRA 2.0 to permanently support seniors existing, exiting the TIBRA program, and you'll hear more about that a little bit later. And then the downstream approach, we address the impacts of system gaps where housing instability often overlaps with clinical and emergency care and where we can assist partners in the community. Next slide, please. This is one of my favorite slides. You've seen this. This just goes to show you that at the anchor, the bottom, is the housing stability and how housing intersects with all of these other departments and the community at large. I mean, if you were to take senior services, you could put them in the, if they were presenting, they would be at the, they would be at the bottom as the anchor. You put public services, same. So we're all kind of moving and helping each other move. Community building at its core. Next slide, please. So data, the Housing Division leverages diverse data and research to guide programs, projects, and developments. We capture local, regional, and national trends and rely on local partners like Fish, BHA, Friends, The Refuge, that state, and regional partners like Dr. Cog, Broomfield Boulder Consortium, Department of Local Affairs, Common Sense Institute, Urban Land Institute, and CHAFA. Next slide, please. These are some of the key findings in many of the reports that you've seen. I won't spend too much time, but I think the home price and mortgage remains near historic highs. Workloads for homeowners is rising, meaning that the number of hours needed to afford a mortgage at the average wage rose 94% over the last decade, from 50 hours to 97 hours needed per month. There is a severe housing shortage that we're all very much aware of. There is market imbalance, which is deepening, but Broomfield continues to work diligently to limit regulatory bottlenecks. I'm really proud of our team, our partners in community development, planning. Colorado remains the least competitive out of 50 states, meaning we have the highest costs, reduced access, and regulatory friction that prevents us from being more nimble on a national level. And some of the other statistics that I do want to throw out is that this is from the CHAFA map gap or gap map. The median income for a two-person household in Broomfield is $99,300. Forty-three percent of our renters are cost-burdened, meaning they're spending over 35% of their income on housing. The median monthly rent is $2,074, which means an income of $82,960 or 84% of the area median income is needed to afford our median rent. Approximately 16% of homeowners are cost-burdened. The median sales price for a single-family detached home is $692,000, which means that an income of $227,869 or 229% of the area median income is needed to afford a median-priced detached home. The median sales price for a townhome or condo is $529,000, an income of $174,000 or 175% of the area median income is needed to afford a median-priced townhome or condo. Next slide, please. Through our research over the last year, three themes in housing best practices service. And that is the critical role of local partnerships in shaping housing stability. Broomfield has a long history of grassroots efforts, lots of players, 40 different organizations. And we are getting stronger. And it's really nice to see the deep connection between stable housing and whole community health, safety, and well-being and economic vitality. So stable housing equals safety, well-being, economic vitality. And then the third is the value of flexibility, adaptability. I had to break this. I'm like, since COVID, we've been pivoting, parawetting. We've been bouncing back, all the while being nimble, resilient, and buoyant. And we're just going to keep, you know, bouncing away and contain that grit. Next slide, please. Three critical housing concerns for Broomfield, besides the ones I mentioned earlier. Senior housing. So our senior housing captures that seniors are the fastest-growing population who are experiencing homelessness and housing insecurity. Funding uncertainty. It's no secret that federal funding is a big question mark, and that does trickle down to states and to local funding. And then our inclusionary housing ordinance impacts. We're just looking to diversify and create more revenue using the Ihome. All right, next slide, please. Take a moment to, you've seen this slide before, but we've kind of, in order to break down some of the buckets that all of the people here in this room fill, we have the 0% to 30% AMI, 30% to 60%, and the 60% to 120% AMI. And some of the partners that we work closely with, Department of Human Services, you can see how they are in the first two columns, along with BHA, who can sometimes overlap into the third column. And our nonprofits and faith-based community partners do a lot of work in the 0% to 60% AMI. Broomfield has been on the streets with everybody else and trying to, with a lot of our programs, we're supporting people on incomes as low as 12%, 13% of the area median income to remain in housing. A lot of those are seniors. And then our programs focus a lot on home ownership and preservation. We also have some current gaps in each of the columns. Permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, housing for seniors, wraparound services. For the 30% to 60% AMI, we have a 1,500. I just saw another statistic saying it's up to almost 1,800 units that are needed for 50% and below AMI. And then a sustainable funding source for a variety of middle-income earners. Next slide, please. These are our programs, and I am so excited. We went from having two programs in 2021 to having, you know, being flexible and nimble enough to accommodate eight different programs. And again, that is my team back here, our team, and just couldn't do this work without them. We have the Home Repair and the Paint-a-thon, and those are administered through Brothers Redevelopment. And we serve, as of July, end of July, we've served 15 different households in those programs, and that uses CDBG funding. The TIBRA program or the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program uses home funds, and those assist people at or below 60% AMI. And currently, Sharon Farrell, who is on the Self-Sufficiency Team, has been doing an incredible job of getting more seniors on this program. And we would like to create that 2.0 program to catch those seniors that are exiting this program. So far, she's got 23 seniors on this with five more in the queue before the end of the year. Partial property tax for the 60% and below. We've served over 1,000 residents with an average payout of about $540, which is right about half of the $1,000 cap. And our team has been working really hard. The expansion program, which council approved to use general funds, we've used $87,000 of the $100,000 and served 250 households. Colorado Legal Services is a very niche group who supports all of our residents who are at 200% of the federal poverty level, which is roughly about 30% of the AMI. And they help with eviction prevention and getting residents to know their rights. Senior Sunshine Home Share is a wonderful program that takes seniors, senior homeowners who are looking for just a partner or a community and someone else to share their home with, and they share it at a cheaper rent-than-market rate. And those people who come into their home, be it an individual, a couple, or a small family, can, it just is exponential how many people it serves. And they're really doing a great job at, so right now, at the, you know, we've provided $12,000, and they've provided seven matches to date and 10 financial assistance counseling. Our Down Payment Assistance Program, this is where we kind of trip a little bit. We are, I would love to say that we were able to help more people in the middle-income bracket. However, the 35% debt-to-income ratio cap is not allowing the, us to really find those who qualify. When people typically buy their first home in FHA loans, they go up to about 50% to 55% of debt-to-income. And it will take an act of the House and Senate to amend this bill. And we have, while it may not help Broomfield, because our time is up in March of 2026, we are acting and we're talking with other municipalities who are having the same issue and hope to resolve that. And then our Mobile Home Park Initiative Program, which is a brand-new program that we brought in, we've been working on it for the last year and a half. And this serves all residents of mobile home parks with no income restrictions. They have to be 18-plus. And it, they, we administer, we partnered with Colorado Poverty Law Project, who is just a phenomenal group of attorneys who dedicate their life to helping people understand their rights, to understand their lease, to understand what their bills are. We are seeing a lot of bills with weird fees. And so now we have the Colorado Poverty Law to kind of take a look and say, hey, you know what, under Colorado statute, dot, 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 you know, you're breaking the law, and this needs to stop. And we're working together with our partners, particularly Fish and Clinica, to make sure that we are using Colorado Poverty Law Project. And then one of the other things that we account for And then one of the other things that we account for is our unexpected items that might pop up, be it a property tax payment or a home repair or things like that. So, those are our programs. Next slide, please. This is our team on the ground. It is, they have made their way into the community. The key finding here is that while marketing approaches have helped us spread the word about our programs, the most effective outreach has been meeting people where they are in the community. The Housing Division has attended ten different city and county events, eighteen pop-ups, including back-to-school days, nights, storytime at the library, the rec centers and job fairs. The housing admin team have had twenty-three walk-in consultations and provided assistance at Broomfield Community Center, George DeCiro Building, and are at partners like Fish, Corbin Manor and Gate and Green. The housing team averages one to do public outreaches per week. I am so proud. I just needed to make that. They're working hard. Next slide, please. For this, I'd like to just take a moment to distinguish between the two types of income-aligned housing that we do have in the, in the city and county of Broomfield. We have the low-income housing tax credits, and then we have the inclusionary housing, income-aligned housing. So, for the Lytech, we've, between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-four, you can see we have created two hundred, over two hundred units for rent apartments to be constructed between twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-seven. We have about two hundred more coming down the pike. In the inclusionary housing ordinance, this for-sale townhomes are, are targeted for our middle-income earners, and they are usually between eighty and a hundred percent AMI. And after the figures today, we might have to raise our, that to a hundred and twenty percent AMI. And we have quite a number of, of developments. Seventy-six for-sale townhomes, three hundred and thirty-one for rent between sixty and eighty percent on the way, in addition to those that are listed here. Next slide, please. Can you go back one, please? Just wanted to say that as a, as a quick count showed us that as of December twenty twenty-four, Broomfield had about six hundred and ninety-eight income-aligned units with approximately five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine more units in the pipeline. I'll just repeat those numbers. Broomfield, as of December twenty twenty-four, had six hundred and ninety-eight income-aligned units with approximately five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine more units in the pipeline over the next five years. And Broomfield has met the Prop one, two, three requirements of increasing our income-aligned homes. One of the goals was to increase the number of income-aligned units by nine percent over the last three years. And with the Grove at Cottonwood and with Ulysses Harvest Hill, we have reached our opt-in goal. So, yes. All right, thank you. Next slide, please. So, these are the different funding sources that we have, and you can see that we use our Housing Development Fund. And then our two federal funding sources are our CDBG funds and our home funds. And the home funds support the TIBR program, and our CDBG funds support some of our home repair, as well as some of our small business and micro grant efforts. And then we have our DOLA Prop one, two, three. Next slide, please. This is a closer look at our Housing Development Fund and how we've created revenue of over eleven million dollars. And as quickly as it comes in, it goes out, and this is kind of where all of that funding is going from really just supporting, investing in housing, investing in our partners, and investing in more income-aligned housing. Next slide, please. I want to take a moment to acknowledge our, our partners and our friends at BHA. The Broomfield Housing Alliance is central to creating manageable, and managing affordable housing in Broomfield, securing approximately fifty housing vouchers, the upcoming development of the Grove, which is forty units, and a land acquisition for sixty-five more affordable units. And I don't want to steal all the thunder, so I'm gonna let them surprise you with more things. Together, BHA and the city and county of Broom, Broomfield align resources to make development successful. And this slide is just one example of how we work together and what it takes from both sides to, to bring a development like Harvest Hill into play. So, you'll see that BHA has the ability to support eight-eleven vouchers, which provide project-based housing subsidies to support very low-income individuals with significant disabilities in living independently with the, the community. BHA did this at the Grove, and then with the one point four million Homemark dollars that the city was able to secure through the Home Consortium. BHA also serves as a special limited partner to access low-income housing tax credits and assists in bringing projects to completion. The city and county of Broomfield supports housing development through fee waivers, building permit and plan review fees, foregoing property tax revenue for extended periods of time equating to millions of dollars, and has access to funding opportunities that our housing authority does not have. CCOB is the entity to provide gap financing. It provided Ulysses with two million in gap financing. And because BHA identified the More Housing Now grant, CCOB applied, presented to the board way out in Rye, right by Kansas, and was awarded the maximum grant of two million for the Harvest Station, it's Harvest Hill, sorry. And while BHA is moving toward financial independence, they are now expected to request an additional funding beyond twenty twenty-seven, requiring a new IGA at that time. It can take a decade or so before a housing authority is able to build up their portfolio and begin generating revenue. And I know our friends are hard at work making things happen. Next slide, please. So, in conclusion, our preferred IHO compliance approach, if we could get a, a nod or some feedback from council's, staff would like to know if council is open to considering mixed solutions that combine onsite units with cash and loop, which would help to achieve both onsite units and cash at the same time, because our Housing Development Fund is, is quickly, yeah, depleting. We're also, you know, staff is actively pursuing grants and tries to remain innovative in local funding sources to support housing stability, especially for our seniors and vulnerable residents, reducing reliance on a single stream revenue. And so, the prioritization and preservation and support for existing residents, CCOB, city and county of Broomfield wants to continue to support the development of new affordable housing, preserve the housing that's available and affordable right now, provide direct support to prevent displacement, ensuring housing stability for current residents. And this includes expanding services addressing the unique challenges faced by seniors who are severely cost-burdened by creating a housing programs, well, by extending the current TIBR program into a TIBR two point oh, which would be a more permanent fix. So, the idea of getting seniors on the TIBR program is to put them on a waitlist to get them into subsidized housing. So, some of them, with as many seniors as we have on that waitlist, the, it is impossible to get everyone. So, we're looking to bridge some of those seniors coming off TIBR to get them to the next level. And we would like some direction, if that is if council sees fit. And so, this concludes our report. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tessier. Now proceed with public comments. If anyone would like to comment on this item, please make your way to the podium. State your name and neighborhood for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Hi, I'm Dana Scott. I live in Ward Three, and I work at Broomfield Fish, the local food and family resource center. I just want to say how proud I am of staff and community partners and council and everyone coming together on housing, because I feel like we've been talking about it for a really long time, and it's amazing to celebrate all the wins that are happening. I also want to let you know that we're, we're hearing from Economic Vitality and Division of Housing. We also work really closely with Department of Human Services and a lot of their housing programs. They are amazing. I was just talking to Asta Clemson, who is working on some of the homelessness solutions in, in our county. And I just wanted to make sure that you all know that that is also happening. And I think that that's a population, our unhoused population is a particularly vulnerable population. And when we're talking about the spectrum of housing solutions, that's really important, too. So, that was it. I just want to say, great job. Really happy to work with all of you. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Lauren Clements. I live in Ward Two, I believe, over by the mall. So, we're on that little skirt edge of Broomfield. And I've also had the pleasure and honor of being the Community Resources Coordinator for our Senior Services Department here at the city and county. And I just really wanted to emphasize the need for assistance with our seniors. My first call on my first day, a little over a year ago, was a senior with multiple disabilities who is being kicked out on the street of her senior low-income apartment because she could no longer afford her own rent. She was living on nine hundred dollars a month, and she had no one. She didn't have any family or friends. She was told by outside parties, there's nothing else we can do for you. And it took us three months and about twelve different organizations, boots on the ground. I was moving stuff out of her storage unit myself, making sure her cat was taken care of. And she now has long-term housing that she can afford. That's only ten percent of her income through a voucher. But I was told that day that these calls are very rare. Like, don't be scared. This isn't every call you're gonna get. These very rarely happen, and I just wanted to say, it's not rare anymore. Over the last year, I have seen a dramatic increase in the calls that I get. Sorry, I'm emotional. And I hear these stories every day of our seniors, even in Silvercrest or Mariel Manor, who, they're on low-income housing, they have vouchers, and they still are panicked about making sure that they have enough food to eat and making sure that their eligible financial assistance can pay their phone bills, can, you know, take care of themselves, get to their appointments. And we have so many amazing senior services here, and our seniors love Broomfield. And a lot of them are having to move to other counties to be able to afford to live. And I just want us to make sure that we're really paying attention to those that are in need and being able to keep our seniors here safe and welcome in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Martin Dormish, Birch Neighborhood. I want to echo the comments of my colleagues, last several folks who, who shared their words are really important. And I just want to make clear that something I think we all know, but that is often not spoken, that each one of these stories and statistics and numbers represents a person with a name and a story and a family and people who care about them. And that needs to be factored into these, these deliberations about funding. I also will say, too, that, and this is, I hadn't planned to share this, but there are a lot of caseworkers, in addition to the, the Child Support and Family Services Department in Broomfield, from nonprofits and senior services and other city departments, other, other community partners that should be recognized as well in this, in this time of, you know, from the proclamation. And soberingly, two of our most significant and highest caseload caseworkers in Broomfield have just moved on. One lost her job and, and one is going to school to get a master's degree. And so, that leaves a really big gap in our community that I don't know how it's gonna be filled. Funding is tight in this area as in many others, and that's a really sobering reality, so I wanted to bring that up tonight. But I did want to say, in regard to the presentation that we just heard, and I'm speaking now as the coordinator of the Broomfield Housing Stability Task Force, that I'm very supportive of the Housing Division's whole-stream approach, upstream, midstream and downstream, their community partnerships, and their work to eliminate regulatory bottlenecks to build income-aligned housing units, as well as to adjust implementation of our IHO to make it more effective. I agree with, with Sharon that many thousands of people in our community are struggling. So, things like a Tenant-Based Rental Assistance two point oh program are definitely called for, especially as it's one of the longest-running housing programs here in Broomfield. So, please get creative with general funds to support the Housing Division's several programs and/or to match funds from CDBG and home allocations and other grants, so the Housing Division's property tax relief, legal assistance to mobile home residents and other programs can continue beyond the next couple of years, and they're very important. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to make any comments? All right, then I'll go to my council colleagues. Any questions or comments from council, council member Ward?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions to get us started. When you were going through kind of all of the different incomes needed to afford various types of, of housing, were you referencing like a single-family household or a four-person family household? What were those?
Yeah, it's typical of a three-to-four-person household.
Okay, I just want to make sure so I know which income brackets to look at. And then you mentioned, excuse me, for the First Time Home Buyer Assistance Program, one of the reasons we're having trouble kind of serving as many people as we hoped was because of what the debt to income ratio is. I know you mentioned that the House and Senate had to amend that. Was that the federal legislature or the state?
State.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yes, Judy McCloskey.
Casual name drop right there. Maybe she's listening. Have we identified what a proper, or I should say, a more appropriate debt to income ratio would be?
Yeah, that's when I was referencing the FHA loans, using their kind of guidelines that support up to fifty percent of debt to income on housing.
Okay. When those numbers are factored in, are they looking at other sources of debt that people may have? Like, I know for younger individuals, they tend to have a lot higher education debt. I'm experiencing that firsthand right now.
Yes.
As well as credit card debt. Are those factored in as well? Because those can be significant burdens on people's income.
Right. When we do this particular calculation, it does not include, like, their other debt. This is like their debt spent on mortgage, insurance, property taxes and the HOA. So, it's just the, the housing debt that we're talking about.
Okay, I'm just pointing that out, because I wonder if it might be more appropriate to really do a holistic approach instead of this idealized world that no longer exists. And then, on the, what slide was it? It was slide, I think, twelve, where you listed different income-aligned housing developments. For the developments that are particularly in the sixty to eighty percent AMI, how are those marketed at all for individuals? Because I think there, there are individuals like myself who fall somewhere between that seventy to eighty percent AMI for a single person, but do not necessarily, like, think of themselves as being, needing income-restricted housing, and so they may not go looking for it. So, I'm curious how we're trying to target those individuals.
Yeah, we've been actually putting our heads together, working with CHAC, which is the Colorado Housing Assistance Program. And we are starting to market or at least make it known to, you know, all of the, the metro fire stations, the, all the school districts. And if you have any suggestions, we're, we're happy to take those, but we noticed that we-
But we noticed that we have to really target market and, and do our best. We have organizations, like the real estate organizations, who also help us kind of spread the word.
Okay. For rentals, I wonder if it would be appropriate also that those apartment complexes, specifically for renters, that have those deed-restricted or income-restricted units advertise that kind of on their platform and when you're going in person? I wonder if that's something we can either work towards or require when they get approved? Just, just an idea.
Yeah, like it.
And then.
And just to clarify, there are some who do have it on their website. Yes.
Wonderful. On slide six, I think it is, where we mentioned the permitting gap. Slide notates that no county met its projected permit target. Do you know what our delta was for Broomfield between our target and how many were actually permitted?
I do not have that off the top of my head, but I can get that for you by tomorrow.
Okay, just curious. And then on that same slide, the kind of types of permits issued, it notes that 53% of the Denver metro area did single-family homes, while other counties like Adams and Jeffco skewed really heavily towards single-family. Do we have our percentage of what we're single-family versus multifamily, whether that be for rent or for sale?
I don't have the percentages, but I do know that it includes single-family homes. It includes condos and townhomes as well as multifamily.
And then kind of going on to slide 16, where you ask for future considerations. Specifically looking at how we can modify the IHO to include both units and a cash-in-lieu fee. Are we looking at modifying it so kind of the net of the program doesn't change in that we're not going to require you have to provide these units and provide a cash-in-lieu? We're just going to do some, maybe just do less dedicated units and make, make, require you, sorry, to provide the cash-in-lieu? Can you walk me through what that?
That, yes. So typically with our IHO, we've been wanting units. So we've been pushing the units in our conversation. Yes, if you can make 20% of those units affordable, we'll take them. And then the, doing too much of that has depleted our housing development fund. So we're hoping to maybe just push a more hybrid approach and saying, hey, you know, we would like to have both the HDF and the units. So that's kind of like our approach. Nothing really changes, but our approach to asking developers in providing both of those.
Okay.
The manager Hoffman, you wanted to add something?
Just wanted to clarify just a couple of things. So it's, it's, it's a strategic intentional approach. So it's going to be more than when they come in indicating whether it's a percentage, whether it's 20%, whether it's 10%, we'll have to look at it on a project-by-project basis. So what staff is looking for tonight is to modify kind of the ideological approach of having a hybrid. So the two different paths that we've taken since 2021, both of the levers that we've pulled have been effective. The first lever was to get seed money for BHA and to really jumpstart bringing on almost 700 units, which quite frankly is astronomical in the north area. There is not another community, it's almost two and a half times what other communities have been able to pull online from an, an attainable, affordable housing perspective. So it's a huge leap.
It feels huge to me, manager Hoffman, too, because I know you've been around since 2017 when we did our first Housing Needs Assessment. And I'm, I'm sorry to jump in, but I was, I was very curious to see what kind of percent increase is that? We've added 700 income-aligned units and there's thousands in the pipeline. From where we were in 2017, how much more inventory did we add?
We can get that. And let me clarify something else. So the, the, the number of units that are in the pipeline are not all affordable units. Those are all encompassing units that have yet to come online. So that's part of the data-driven decisions that we need to make moving forward. So as we have loaded those attainable and affordable units, we have seen the cash-in-lieu do exactly what we were hoping it would do, which was when we make the cash-in-lieu higher, it's a natural regulator for developers to then say, okay, the ROI on, on paying cash is very different than the ROI on, on, on providing those units. So again, it's, it's not a willy-nilly approach of, of what are they willing to do? We need to come up with a very targeted approach on what is that number? Is, are we going to focus on the 30% to 50% AMI? Are we going to focus on the 50% to 70% AMI? We need to become much more accurate, targeted, if you will, on what that approach looks like. So it's not an end goal. Now we have IHO funds for BHA and for the Housing Division. It needs to be a very systematic approach to be able to say, under what circumstances would we say all HO? On what circumstances would it be? To what degree would we be willing to take a hybrid approach? It depends on the number of units. It depends on the location. It depends on the capacity. It depends on a whole host of things. So again, what we're bringing tonight is seeking guidance to explore this further, to come back to council to say, here is a, again, data-driven approach of, of what these trade-offs are to the degree of, do you want cash or the units? And, and what are we willing to trade in order to get those? Because you're, you're not going to be able to have it all. What we do know from a, from a positive perspective is when you increase the IHO rates for the buy, for, for the buyout, it translates into providing the units. When you do conversely, it translates into increasing the amounts available for other housing division. So it's, it's prioritizing and, and reallocating. So we'll come back to council with part of the discussions that Ms. Tessie has had this evening when we're talking about our seniors. When we're talking about increasing those funds, housing for all, when we talk about being creative with the budget. I take exception to that because the budget is the budget. And so the next two to three years for this council is going to have to be a strategic, targeted approach because there are finite amount of funds. So creativity evokes into me something less than a, a very strategic, targeted, data-driven trade-off perspective.
I hear you. Thank you very much. Councilmember Ward, continue.
Thank you. I just, that was a great clarification. I appreciate that. Yes, I do support kind of exploring this idea of what would that hybrid approach look like? I, I do support finding diversified funding for, for housing. It's never wise to be reliant on one single source. And then, yeah, I would support prioritizing preservation and support for existing residents. I think that is important, that people that are housed continue to be housed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Henkel?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. This is a night sponsored by housing. Case management, mental health, this is a huge topic tonight. So I really appreciate it. And I think it's okay to get emotional tonight, you know? I mean, this is an emotional topic for a lot of people. People are hurting. Talk to anyone, groceries are up and everything. So I got emotional at Adams 12. You were talking about the tents or the, the tabling. And I got emotional out of the blue and my daughter was super embarrassed. She was 16, you know, and I'm going back to Adams 12, her legacy high school for the night. And it just, it made me emotional that you all are meeting people where they're at on nights where, you know, they could be working and instead they're at back-to-school night. It's kind of a mandatory night for those people. So I think it's very important. So thank you for all of that work. I was wondering also what we were, the ask was tonight. So thank you for that explanation. The only thing, the only input I'll give on that is just to make sure that it's at least somewhat predictable for our home builders too. If our home builders were here tonight, they would be like, well, that's great case-by-case basis, but we also need something that's a little predictable. So let's keep that in mind when we're talking about which levers we need to push when we're talking about individual applications. They need to know going into that application what they can expect. My main question is tonight, we've had some mobile home issues in Ward five, to say the least. You know, they are required, you talked about fees and, you know, all these hidden fees and it's driving me crazy. I think I'm at the point where we just need to pass some laws locally. And that'll probably come later, but you know, we're requiring people to buy skirting that is hurricane-proof. And it is so expensive and they can only go through certain vendors that the management will let them go through. Meanwhile, our residents are saying, hey, I can find it cheaper online over here and then I can do it myself. And so we're just finding like these really random fees. They'll often do a drive, you know, by their, their property. And they'll say, well, these personal items need to be removed. And the residents are looping me into these conversations and they're like, I have no idea what they're talking about. I have no idea what personal items are talking about. Well, then these fees will accrue if they don't remedy it within a certain amount of time. And I'm, we're going back and forth as to which personal items they're even referring to. So I'm personally frustrated. And I know that there are certain software that they use to identify, you know, the property, you know, items that they have to remove. But our residents are really stressed out. They're really stressed out about adding all of these random fees without being told exactly what they need to be removing. So that's sort of a, a future-forward thing. So I just kind of wanted to ask you to explain a little bit more about the Mobile Home Park Initiative and what that entails. And it sounds like that is a lot of qualifying households. I saw the, the questionnaire on there. Are we already receiving feedback? When does that questionnaire stop? And then what is that information giving to us? And how are we helping our mobile home residents? How are we utilizing that data?
Yeah, so thank you for the question. The Colorado Poverty Law Project worked with us, the Housing Division. And the Housing Division worked with Public Health, worked with Human Services and a bunch of other teams to put that survey together to find out baseline data for those who are living, what is, what is a day in the life and experience for those living in a mobile home park? So that's the, the, the survey. And it is an anonymous survey, so no personal identifying information is around. And so when we have issues like, for example, those hidden fees, we speak with Broomfield Fish, they let us know that their, their residents are experiencing this. We send them to Colorado Poverty Law, which is directly on our website. And then they can fill out the application and they will work specifically with those residents. So they are looking at what the issues are, the, the, the meaning behind the surveys to create that baseline data. So then when the, the Colorado Poverty Law Center is working with the, these individuals, they come in with kind of like their knowledge base already geared toward what the survey has provided for them. They also get to know their lease, get to know their rights as a mobile home park resident. And knowing what the Colorado laws are, then they can kind of help the residents to say, hey, you know, these, these, these are, these are not lawful practices that the management is practicing. And so that's where CPLP would come in and say, hey, this is, this, these are your rights. And they would be more of the liaison because the city and county of Broomfield doesn't get involved with tenant and landlord disputes. So the Colorado Poverty Law is tracking all this data and then can use it to inform us. And the survey is open till the end of the year. And we kept it open because of our outreach efforts. And Clinica, Fish, other organizations are sending those folks to take the survey. So we end to fill out the application to receive assistance from CPLP. And that could inform local laws that might need to occur if these practices aren't remedied.
Yeah, thanks. I, I'm just trying to like look for ways that we can just prevent stress and anxiety in our residents and what can we do to just put into, to law, just saying, hey, this is what's expected. So that way we're not going back and forth and we're not having to do so much of that, you know, backend effort. So I really appreciate that. Would love to understand any sort of policy work that we need to do. And that feedback would be really important. Lastly, Colorado is the, has the third-largest growing aging population in the United States. It is going to come to a head, I think, and it already has. You know, we're trying to keep, you know, federal dollars, I serve on the board that keeps people who are already in income-aligned housing in their homes because even though their, their rent is still going up though, I mean, it's $200 a month now. And they're on those fixed incomes. So all of these rising costs are just, it's going to, to implode essentially. So we do have to act upon that and I fully support that. And I support the hybrid model and again, just some predictability for our home builders. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cohen?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to ask a quick question about some data you had on slide six and do a little deeper on IHO. But on the slide, I think it was six, you talked about the severe housing shortage and that we need 37,000 to 55,000 new units annually through the next couple of years. Yet we're seeing a real softening in the housing market. It's a buyer's market. And sale, I mean, values have dropped a couple percent. Some places sales have dropped 10%. The people, if you're selling now, you're having to sweeten the deal to get your house sold. So how does that match with the severe housing shortage? Is it just simply in certain supply areas that we're seeing? Or is it that 50,000 needed in a certain income zone?
Yeah, it would be a 50% AMI and below is where that big shortage is across the, the state. And then Broomfield's gap is about 1,800 for 50% and below AMI.
So I guess my question is, we're not, it feels a little different than like when IHO was adopted in 2020. I think we were in the heat of a really hot growth market that continued and now is starting to taper, right? Even though it sounds like there's still a huge demand, or at least we need greater supply in order for our prices to mediate or for rents to go down. But we're not seeing builders building.
I see what you're saying.
Correct?
Correct.
At least it's, I'm hearing it's slowing down.
Yes.
And I, I've had one person say, well, the climate is different. The IHO no longer fits the circumstances where maybe we're asking too much. In other words, to your hybrid approach, are they just going to say no? That they don't want to build housing that's below a certain AMI and they just won't? Or do you think we still can ask for these and be successful in getting either the cash-in-lieu or the mixed, this different hybrid approach you're projecting?
Okay, I see your question. Thank you. So with the pre-applications that the developers come with, the Housing Division is there with ComDev and about 15 other different departments. And we go through that every developer, the inclusionary housing is a part of that. And so we want to be flexible and buoyant with where they're at. And we want to be able to negotiate, let's say, you know, our, our ask in the IHO is to provide 60% AMI. Someone might come back and say, well, we can't do 20% 60% AMI, but we'll do 25% at 70% AMI or thereabouts. And so do we say, hey, that's not a bad idea? And, you know, we just want to be flexible in, within that IHO where the developer who's coming here knows in advance that we have the inclusionary housing ordinance that they would participate in.
So what you're asking for is a greater range than what the IHO now presently allows you?
You know, I'm not asking for.
Mayor, if I could jump in.
Oh, Ms. Burton, study.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Cohen, you brought up a really good point in terms of how we don't see developers. Yes, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Cohen, you brought up a really good point in terms of, um, how we don't see developers looking to do the full spectrum of affordability. It is very challenging for developers to achieve less than the 60% AMI. And in fact, those are exactly the projects that really are coming forward to us and seeking additional assistance. So Ulysses, the Cottonwood Project, these are projects that are able to achieve less than the 60% AMI. And what we're hoping is that by doing the hybrid approach, we achieve the units onsite for many of our market rate projects so that they have a portion of their development that are achieving that 60 to 80% range. And then they're providing additionally some of their required units in the cash and lieu equivalent. And that is how we help fund the Housing Development Fund. And then that can be utilized for the gap financing to help us achieve the ability to have less than 60% AMI units through, um, partnerships with other projects, um, since they're unlikely to be built as inclusionary housing with market rate projects. So in, in that way, it helps us to, to balance that approach.
I was just trying to get a sense, projecting forward, we're not going to have as hot a market as we did five years ago. And maybe especially if it's, the economy continues to be as chaotic and may really, we might see a real dip. And we, other communities don't have an IHO. And so will developers just go elsewhere because it's easier than coming to Broomfield? And with that, I'm just, if, if the still policy still works, I guess is my question. So obviously open to what you bring back and, because we need to find the right mix, um, if I, if you're understanding my point. I also wanted to ask, just make as a comment, um, on, I appreciated the story from the young lady about the senior she was helping on day one and how those stories are including, I'm curious whether that's, are we just seeing rent increases? Is that's what's, you said you're getting more and more cases. So is it rent increases that are driving it or loss of assistance? Um, cause a lot of federal programs are being cut. I don't, I just was curious as to what you're, since you're on the front lines, what you're seeing.
Hey, um, yes. So a lot of it is, um, the apartment complexes. They are increasing their rent substantially, substantially more than they are getting social security increases or disability check increases. So it's making their very, very small budgets even smaller.
Is that being driven by demand for these apartments or just the costs, utility, taxes, whatever other costs go into it?
I think part of it could be demand, especially with the fact that seniors, we keep getting more and more seniors here. It's a ever-growing population here. Um, so there is a high demand for those apartments. But I know everything is going up, so it's hard to really know. Uh, Sherri probably knows more about that.
Thank you.
Fine. Um, so in the low income housing tax credit homes, which a lot of our seniors are already in, CHAF sets the rent limit. And each year it is allowed to go up a certain amount. And yes, with that allowance of, of increasing the rents that is pricing some of the seniors here, some of them have maybe two or three years before they're priced out with these yearly, um, increases.
Are you able to project that you know how many are going to be hitting that mark in a few years?
Uh, what I do know is there is about 350 seniors, um, living in, uh, Broomfield that are severely cost burdened, um, at any given time. So roughly about that number. Yeah. And the seniors that we're talking about right now are already living in those low income housing tax credit homes.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And I appreciate the work. It's amazing. Your story, getting someone to 10% of what they're paying. That's incredible service. Last thing real quick, I just noted on your slide, you talked about a pop-up. And I know the Sustainability Office did a pop-up recently in Front Range, which was really terrific to see. I'd love to see a housing pop-up in Front Range as well, if you haven't already. But I think those pop-ups are really valuable to reach people because they just don't have the transportation or the time to, to come here. So thank you very much.
And just to clarify, we did have a pop-up there.
Oh, wow. Thank you so much, Ms. Tessier. Uh, Councilmember Winn?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I think we can all agree that housing is definitely, um, not a need, but an urgent need right now. And I know for a fact that in the Broomfield Community Survey, a lot of folks mentioned that they're looking for more housing, whether you're a young person who just recently graduated from college or you're a senior. And again, I really appreciate the, you know, comments and the story about how the most vulnerable people are the ones who are most affected. So, uh, my guidance would be on council would be the hybrid model. I think that's important. More folks need housing. We should get more housing, you know, that's, it's a simple model. So, uh, that, that's my comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Yeah, I just want to clarify one thing. We're not changing anything in the inclusionary housing ordinance. This is just giving staff direction to do this, to try to get more of the cash and lieu. And then when the developer comes forward, we're not objecting because we're like wanting onsite units. So, so when they come forward, this is staff's recommendation. It's the, it's a mix. And then we should go like along with that and not then start changing the focus. Okay. I am totally fine with that. I just wanted to clarify and that is good. Thank you.
Thank you. For Tim Sha.
May I add one more comment, Mayor? Thank you. Um, we, the Housing Division is, uh, working with Root Policy, who's done our inclusionary housing ordinance. Um, and there, we're due for a, um, update on both the IHO and the Housing Needs Assessment. And so that should be coming, um, in addition, uh, in 2026. So we'll have a little bit more information there, um, and utilize them as a, as a resource. If we want things to change, but yes.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Sha.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, uh, I, there was been a couple of comments about the key findings in Broomfield and across the region slide. I would love to get those metrics in terms of what Broomfield's numbers are in each of those categories, you know, specifically like the permitting gap versus, I know that we've, we've taken a look at our development review process and tried to find out ways in which we can speed that up for developers. And I would like to make sure that, that we are continuing to do that, uh, you know, so that we aren't, uh, sliding in that, that we are able to meet our projected, you know, permit, uh, target, not because of, of what we are doing, but simply i- if it's happening that we aren't meeting that target, it means that we just aren't getting enough developers to come, you know, to the table to, you know, propose projects. But we are processing those as quickly as possible. Uh, and then the other one was the, uh, the policy response incomplete, uh, well, I guess that's, you know, similar. The, the zoning rigidity, uh, that's there. So again, you know, how, how is Broomfield compared to the rest of the, the state? Are we performing, uh, like we should, or are there improvements that need to happen? So I would love to get some more data on that slide. And then the preferred IHO compliance approach. So I, I know that we've worked so hard to get those units. And knowing the cost of those units, uh, that, that are created, knowing how expensive those units are to create. I, I hate to turn down units and say, we'll take the cash that's not even going to come close to creating those units. So that gives me a little bit of, of, of heartache, uh, that, that we, that we wouldn't be taking those units. But it sounds like that we aren't necessarily turning down those units. Uh, but if it's, but we aren't necessarily going to push maybe as hard to get those units. Is that, is that the approach?
I think with the research that we're doing and with determining whether or not this area or this, um, development would, um, support, you know, a lower, uh, income in number. We're, I don't really know. I want to say no, we're not, we're not, uh, going to prevent developers from developing in Broomfield. Can you repeat your question? I'm not sure what you're asking.
Yeah, fair enough. So, um, you know, I think in, in the past, we've encouraged those units to be built.
Yes.
Um, and we've, and we've pushed as hard as we can to get those units built. And it sounds like that instead of pushing as hard to get those units built, we might be okay accepting that cash and lieu because we need that to fund these other programs that we've now started.
So the cash and lieu is also used to be the gap financer for the lower Lytech, the, your low income housing tax credits. So if our, if we are unable to provide that gap financing for the, the lower Lytech versus the inclusionary housing, remember that slide, you see that there's Lytech homes, which are capital A affordable, um, in the state's eyes, capital A affordable. So they're at 60% or below. And those, um, come with typically the local municipality, they, um, developers will ask for that gap financing. And that's where that cash and lieu is going to come in. So having a little bit of the cash and lieu would be able to fund those lower housing, um, tax credit homes. Does, without money in that Housing Development Fund, we do not have the gap financing.
No, I appreciate that. And, and just to go to the next bullet point, which is continue to find diversified funding for housing stability. You know, I think that this is interesting because what we're doing is we're saying that, that, that cash and lieu is so important that that is that funding that we need. And if it dries up because we're getting all these units created, then we don't have money for all of this other thing. So it seems like that what we actually need is to build a device diversified housing fund, which we had a group propose a housing survey to the community. And I think that what most people were perplexed on is what programs are going to support, you know, what programs would be supported by these additional tax dollars that are created within our community. And it's these programs right here, and many of them, as people have said, and as well as public commentators talked about, is the, they protect, you know, protect our seniors to make sure our seniors are housed. So I think that that's the message that we need to, to, to share is that right now we are beholden to these developer cash and lieu funds and that we actually need to create more funding to support our seniors that are in our community. So I, I would continue to, to say that what we need to do is continue to diversify that funding and not be so beholden to those developer cash and lieu. So, um, I, you know, it sounds like that this is the plan that, that may be going ahead, but I, I would, I would like to do both, right? Continue to create as many new units as we can because we are behind. Uh, but at the same time, create more diversified housing so that we can support these programs. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Mayor Potem, if I may, just, just to give everyone a, a sense, um, from a, from a subsidizing perspective. So we have, um, and we've shared this with council before, but a, but a prior screen that will help us again, make intentional strategic decisions, not just about what's going to happen right now, but five years from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now. And, and part of that, for example, is when we look at Harvest Hill. Well, let's take that as an example for, for our most recent. There's 152 units. The affordability period is 40 years. The loan grant amount from CCOB was four million. You got to keep in mind that when we have these types of, of housing developments, we also, we don't collect property tax now or for, in, in perpetuity. We don't collect use tax, so we contribute the use tax. We don't charge building, um, building plan fees. And then the, the PLD cash and lieu fee. So the total CCOB support for Harvest Hill was $10 million. So those calculations have to be included in every single development that we do as we move forward for each one of these line items, not as a shock factor, but simply to say, under what circumstances are we willing to trade off? For what population are we willing to trade off? And that, that's part of the, the, the direction and the, and the question tonight is we would love to be able to say, we are all things to all people for all housing, up to 100% of AMI. That realistically, that is not where we are. So when we talk about keeping seniors in their homes, there's a part of that conversation to say, are we going to build new senior housing? Or are those funds going to be to help Muriel Manor and Silvercrest and our existing that we know will tap out from, from, from the T-Bra? Um, or for the short-term funding mechanisms? So again, when we're thinking about CCOB subsidy per unit for each one of these developments, Crosswinds, Northwest and Harvest Hill, um, all range, it's, it's, it's about $66,000 per unit that CCOB subsidizes. So it's not just a cash and lieu from the developer perspective. It is the ongoing cost to CCOB to also provide these units, even with Lytech and, and, and all of those other accoutrements. Again, just like the budget conversations we've had, we are a maturing community now. The decisions that we make moving forward need to be prioritized. Uh, as uncomfortable as that is to be able to say, under what circumstances is this population going to be addressed?
Fair point. There you go. Uh, anyone else? Uh, I can't see if Councilmember Marsh Holson has anything. Well, um, so did you get adequate direction? I feel like we got consensus to move forward with the hybrid approach. And I mean, supporting all of the above strategies, if that hybrid approach is successful and we can, um, rebuild the Housing Development Fund. I mean, it's going to be contingent on, uh, budget, budget availability. And as some of you may not realize, property taxes went down. As much as you hear people talking about property taxes went up, well, actually they went down last year. The special session, uh, lowered the assessment rate for both residential and non-residential property taxes. So property owners will be seeing property tax relief. Uh, what that means for the city and county, particularly the county, is that we're seeing millions less in county revenue. So by forgiving property tax on an affordable housing project, we're kind of double losing because we're not getting the funds we need to provide the county services to those residents. So it does have to be applied judiciously because we can't provide our essential services without property tax. So we have a lot of things to juggle and that, that's I guess where it gets creative. So, um, I support obviously all of the staff recommendations and I, I just thank you. You're like the, the little team that could and, and you're doing so much with, you know, the little bit that we have, but we're making a difference because I know back in 2017, when we did that Housing Needs Assessment, for the first one, because of you, Ms. Tessier, that we had a much bigger gap. And the fact that we've added 700 units is amazing. So it's a testament to all of your hard work and all of our partners. You know, we're, we're doing everything we can and I think we're moving in the right direction and I'm just truly grateful. I got a little emotional too, because I've been on this journey for eight years. And I'm really proud of what we've, what we've done together. So thank you. Well, it looks like a break time. It's, uh, 8:07. We're going to take our 10-minute recess if you don't mind. We'll, we'll, we'll come back with the Broomfield Housing Alliance update. We'll be back at eight, eight 20. Thanks. We'll be back at 8:20. Thanks. You on? Whenever Jake's ready. Welcome back, everyone. We're going to continue on with our report section, and the next report is our Broomfield Housing Alliance annual update. Come on down, Ms. Heizer.
And I do want to, I really appreciate City Manager Hoffman's comments. I mean, this is a very complicated, there are a lot of trade offs. They're financial, they're human, we all are struggling with those, and I just, I want to acknowledge that. There's no easy answers, there's no easy path forward. We're all trying to figure this out together. So just, I just want to recognize and appreciate that. But anyways, let's get started. So good evening. I'm Kristin Heizer. Good evening. Let me start again. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, city council members, city staff, and members of our community. I'm Kristin Heizer, Executive Director of the Broomfield Housing Alliance, and I'm honored to be here with you tonight. I'm joined by my wonderful colleagues, Amanda Ropec and Adriana Shury. And together, we're excited to share how the Broomfield Housing Alliance is helping shape housing solutions that strengthen our community. Before we begin, on behalf of the BHA Board of Commissioners and our team, I want to pause and recognize you for your leadership, your commitment, and the energy you have brought to tackling housing challenges in our community. It's been really inspiring to stand alongside many of you this summer at different celebrations and groundbreakings, and just to see all this great work coming to fruition. So just thank you for that leadership. Next slide, please. You've seen this slide many times before, but for the community members who are not familiar with us, I just want to take a minute to review who we are. The Broomfield Housing Alliance is Broomfield's independent housing authority. We were created in 2022 through the vision of our community and city council to take on the challenge of housing head on. In just three and a half short years, we've moved from concept to action, building partnerships, unlocking resources, and advancing projects that are already shaping what housing in Broomfield can look like. While our work touches every aspect of affordable housing, our priorities remain focused on creating and preserving housing opportunities that meet the diverse needs of Broomfield residents, especially those most in need of stable and affordable housing. Next slide, please. So far in 2025, we've seen much of the work from the past three years come to fruition, and the momentum is real. Here are just a few highlights from the past year of BHA's progress toward meeting Broomfield's housing needs. The Grove at Cottonwood, BHA closed on the financing to build the property and celebrated its groundbreaking. After an estimated 14 months of construction, 40 new rental units will be ready by August of next year. That property will be serving 40 members of our community that are earning between 30 and 60% AMI, prioritizing the needs of our residents with intellectual and developmental disabilities. The property will also offer services and programming. Harvest Hill, built by Ulysses Development Group, you've heard about that a lot this evening, and we are serving as partner in that project. Broke ground earlier this year, and we're on track to deliver 152 rental homes by mid 2027. Vista Point, you'll be hearing about that later this year. It is being co-developed by BHA and Blue Line this project and is in development review. It will be submitted for a low income housing tax credit award in early 2026. Again, that property will be serving families earning between 30 and 60% AMI. Again, another great accomplishment, and this is thanks to you and your opting in for Proposition 123. We were awarded $3.24 million to acquire six acres of land. We're actively advancing the acquisition, creating a development plan for the site, and that's prioritizing the housing needs of seniors earning between 30 and 60% AMI. So all of those projects that I just mentioned, all those developments are delivered because of the cash and lieu that was provided through the IHO. So we were able to take those dollars that we, BHA was awarded, not awarded, but granted three years ago, and then leverage those into these tax credit opportunities that have been created. Moving on, oh, sorry, hang on there one second, I'm flip my page, but yeah, if we could go back, sorry about that, Jake. All right. So another great thing that we accomplished this year, and several of our partners are here with us that have been on this journey with us. BHA continues to help lead the collaborative Broomfield Housing Solutions Forum. It brings together 40 local organizations and advocates. This past year, the forum prepared and adopted the collaborative housing strategy for Broomfield. It's a guide for collective action, policy and systems change to expand housing options and resources for residents experiencing housing instability. The strategy focuses on programming and services and funding and regulatory needs for individuals who are experiencing homelessness all the way through the affordable housing income spectrum up to 80% AMI. And then finally, one of the things that we're really proud of is our organizational growth. Over the past year, BHA has assumed full responsibility for administrative and operational functions. We added staff capacity by hiring a housing program manager and strengthened our internal systems to support long term success. And our financial foundation is strong, and at the end of the second quarter, BHA holds $1.9 million in cash, and we have $5.6 million in assets. With the award of the Proposition 123, that will be increasing, our assets will be increasing by another $3 million by the end of this year. Every dollar BHA generates is reinvested directly into creating lasting housing solutions for the Broomfield community. For the rest of this presentation, I'll share what these successes mean for BHA's continued growth and how we're building the capacity to meet the housing needs of tomorrow. Next slide, please. I'd like to begin talking about investing in affordable housing development and what that means for BHA's operating budget, especially our development budget. This is what allows us to keep doing the work we're created to do, creating housing opportunities for Broomfield residents. At its core, this work is a cycle of investment, gradual revenue growth, and reinvestment. Each project we take on strengthens BHA's financial position and equips us for the next one, steadily building our capacity to meet Broomfield's housing needs. Now that we're on the other side of the financial close of the Grove at Cottonwood, we can clearly show you how this cycle works. Since early 2022, BHA invested about $1.3 million in the Grove. That was from buying the land, design, entitlements, and all the way through the financial close. In May, we closed on our, we had our financial closing, and we reached our break point, breakeven point. Reimbursed for our pre-development expenses and receiving the first portion of our developer fee, about $1.3 million came back to BHA. Looking forward, BHA will receive the remainder of our developer fee over the next couple of years. And as an owner and partner, we will continue to earn about $35,000 annually. While this is a strong return, it's still just a drop in the bucket of what it takes to bring the next development from concept to reality. But here's the most important part, every dollar goes straight back into the next opportunity. This reinvestment cycle is how we keep providing affordable homes in Broomfield, one development laying the foundation for the next. The Grove shows how a single project can create new affordable home housing, generate revenue for both BHA and the Broomfield community, strengthen BHA's financial position and build future capacity, and provide ongoing operational support for years to come. Next slide, please. Now I want to talk about leveraging dollars into Broomfield. This kind of gets to the heart of a lot of what we were just talking about, how cash and lieu can be used to leverage dollars. BHA multiplies every dollar invested by bringing outside resources into Broomfield to support our shared commitment to meeting housing needs. Between the Grove and Vista Point, these two developments alone have already attracted nearly $24 million for housing in our community. And that's before Vista Point has even received a full financial award. When we add in other financial gains over the last three years that are listed on this chart, BHA has leveraged more than $27 million in Broomfield to support housing efforts. On top of that, we've partnered with the state and our development partners to secure 18 project-based vouchers that remain with the property in perpetuity, ensuring families can afford to access and remain in their homes. And our housing choice voucher program has more than doubled since BHA took it over two years ago. But affordable housing investment doesn't just benefit the families who move in it. It strengthens the entire community. It creates stability for local workers, seniors, and families. It supports Broomfield businesses by ensuring employees can live where they work. It generates direct revenues for the city. Through, while there's been a lot of discussion about the costs, it does end up paying in through fees, through the TAP fees and some of the different fees that we pay. So for the example, the Grove, we did end up paying $1.2 million in fees back into the city's coffers. And while property taxes from affordable housing may be lower, these developments still strengthen the tax base as residents pay sales taxes, contribute utility fees, and fill essential jobs in the community. So each development builds lasting returns, reinforcing Broomfield's investment in BHA, delivering more affordable homes, stabilizing neighborhoods, and capturing critical state and federal resources into our community that would otherwise go elsewhere. Next slide, please. And Sharon and I had similar slides, but I just did want to talk about the power of partnership. This work really can't happen without all of us contributing to it. Harvest Hill demonstrates both the necessity and the opportunity for the city and county of Broomfield and BHA to lever, to fully leverage our unique authorities and resources to bring new homes online. Since Sharon went into that into detail, I will skip that. But I do just want to emphasize by us working together. But I do just want to emphasize by us working together, we were able, what that will result in is 152 new rental homes serving families, older adults and individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, as well as bringing $27.2 million of economic impact supporting housing in Broomfield. So Harvest Hill is proof that BHA and Broomfield can work together to achieve outcomes that neither of us couldn't accomplish alone. Next slide, please. So in addition to creating new homes, we've been talking a lot about that. BHA is also working to preserve existing affordable housing by acquiring multifamily properties and securing them with deed restrictions. Over the past year, we've explored five acquisition opportunities shown on this map. Unfortunately, in each of these cases, we face challenges that prevented us from moving forward. In today's market, sellers often accept higher competing offers or the deals simply prove financially unfeasible. The key barriers include high carrying costs, elevated interest rates, limited operating funds due to reduced rents and competition and timing for scarce financial resources. Earlier this year, thanks to state legislation, the city and county of Broomfield assigned its right of first refusal, right of first author, offer, authority to BHA. This new tool gives us the ability to respond quickly when li-tach properties are nearing expiration. But here's the catch, to make the tool effective, BHA needs access to immediate acquisition funding in order to compete in today's market. So reflecting back on Sharon's questions for our community and recognizing and appreciating we are in a resource constrained environment, both locally but also federally, with changes coming at us every other day, we do ask our community if there is a path forward to create new innovative funding sources to support housing stability programs, including our efforts to preserve affordability in addition to the new homes that we're creating. Next slide, please. And with that, I want to thank you for your continued support and for your steadfast commitment to expanding income-aligned housing in Broomfield. We always appreciate the opportunity to meet, share updates and discuss the possibilities we can create together. And I'm happy to answer any questions that she may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Heiser. We'll now move to public comments. If anyone would like to comment on this item, please make your way to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. Martin Dormish again. I had to modify my comments based on tonight's very robust discussion. But I just have a few thoughts to add to BHA's presentation tonight. Briefly, as it was intended, when it was created by this body, the Housing Alliance really does in practice bring game-changing and nationally recognized energy and ability to enhance local housing affordability and stability. They leverage funding in a very efficient way and make every allocation go a long way, as evidenced as we've heard tonight by the recent groundbreaking of the Grove at Cottonwood development in my neighborhood. And as you consider your IGA with BHA tonight, please consider supporting them at the maximum allowable level of $500,000. Housing has been a central topic of tonight's meeting and a number of challenges around housing here in Broomfield have been before us. And I want to encourage all of us, including our city partners, to consider the collaborative housing strategy that was developed earlier this year by the Broomfield Housing Solutions Forum, which is a collaborative effort, including city departments and nonprofits, faith communities and others, other stakeholders in our community, that could provide a really great framework for all of us together as we work collaboratively toward addressing these, these really serious housing issues that we see in our community. And I will add by way of reminder that the Housing Stability Task Force that, that I am a part of proposed two small tax-related ballot measures for this fall's election that were not eventually referred because of a 20-point polling gap in likely voter support. And as many of you know. And so we're undertaking a longer term Plan B Awareness and Engagement Campaign to ensure Broomfield residents know about the many urgent housing-related needs that exist in our community and that we've heard about tonight, the ways BHA and the Housing Division and many other organizations are working to meet them and to explore ways as a community to creatively generate new funding. I acknowledge the trade-offs at play here at every level, from local government to nonprofits to everyday households. And I'm also mindful of another recent local funding effort. Two falls ago, I believe, when the city received unfavorable polling for a possible increase in local taxes to fund a new police and courts facility, the perceived need didn't magically disappear. The city and council pivoted and this spring approved more than $70 million for that purpose. Our current $15 million per year gap in funding to meet urgent housing-related needs also won't magically disappear just because our proposed measures didn't make it to the ballot. And since housing and shelter are basic human needs along with community safety, my hope is that in the midst of its budget deliberations and along with other stakeholders, the city will consider ways to make similarly robust investments in those areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard? All right, I'll go to my council colleagues next. Any questions or comments from council? Oh, oh, one, okay. Councilmember Henkel.
I won't take too long tonight. I just appreciate the presentation and just the relationship that we have with BHA. And when you guys presented to the Colorado Counties, Inc., they were really impressed with your presentation and the forward motion of what's going to happen here in Broomfield. And they're excited too, to hear what's already been happening and just the different partners that you have and who you're engaging. They've actually been really, the county commissioners in the metro area have been really impressed with the way you've engaged the public in different avenues and really empowered them to have their own voice. So tell Gabby I say hi tonight and appreciate all of the efforts. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Winn.
Thank you, Mayor. We're a small but mighty team we have here in Broomfield. I think, I just want to recognize that y'all have done an incredible amount of work. Obviously, this year's been incredible seeing and we've gotten a lot of praise and a lot of publicity. And I know the next few years are going to be more tough. I think that this is going to be, the next few times might be difficult and I, I just hope that we can find dollars that we can be able to continue to support the work you do. So thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you so much for being here and no comments or other questions, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Well, thank you very much for the update and for all the work you're doing. We're happy to partner with you and we're just excited for the future. We've come a long way already in just a short time and I want you to be acknowledged for that. What you've accomplished is very impressive. So thank you. All right, we'll now continue with the reports section of the agenda. City Manager Hoffman, do you have a report?
I do not.
All right, thank you. City and County Attorney Rogers, do you have a report?
No, thank you.
All right. Look, we're getting to the consent agenda already. Council's consideration of the consent items is next. A reminder that Item 6E was pulled from this evening's agenda earlier in the evening and will not be heard at this time. The clerk will read all of the consent items by title and there'll be one opportunity for public comments and council questions and comments. Will the clerk please read Agenda Items 6A through 6D by title?
6A, Approval of Minutes for the Regular Council Meeting of August 12, 2025. 6B, Proposed Resolution Number 2025-132, Authorizing Intergovernmental Agreements for Election Services Between the City and County of Broomfield and the Adams 12 Five-Star Schools, Ames Community College, Boulder Valley School District RE2, School District 27J, Jeffco Public Schools, St. Brain Valley School District RE-1J and Weld County School District RE-8. 6C, Proposed Resolution Number 2025-128, Authorizing a Construction Agreement with Environmental Logistics, Inc. for the Construction of Redpoint Ridge Park Landscape Renovation. 6D, Proposed Ordinance Number 2274, Approving a Business Investment Agreement with Raven Space Systems, Inc., First Reading.
Thank you. We'll now proceed with public comments. If any residents are using the call-in service, they should indicate their desire to speak by pressing star nine to raise their hand. We'll start with in-person comments. If anyone would like to be heard, on these items, please come up to the podium. Right, seeing none, any questions from council on consent? All right, before asking for a motion, I want to remind everyone that Item 6B contains intergovernmental agreements which require two-thirds approval of council. Is there a motion by council that Consent Items 6A through 6D be approved? Councilmember Winn?
I make this motion.
Thank you. Second, Councilmember Ward?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, then council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Marsh Holson, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. You got that one. Okay, all council members have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously, nine to zero. The first item under Action Items this evening is a Proposed Resolution Approving a Consulting Agreement Related to the Broomfield Comprehensive Plan and Transportation Mobility Plan Update. Before we get started, Councilmember Henkel, would you like to make a statement on this item?
Yes, I am going to recuse myself from this vote. I have an extended family member who submitted the proposal and so I will be stepping aside for this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counsel has a copy of the Agenda Memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor. And next up is Lynn Merwin. She's going to introduce us to this item and she is our illustrious Deputy Director of Community Development and Planning. Ms. Merwin?
Thank you, Manager Hoffman. Good evening, council. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Council. Uh, yes, we're going to review the, quickly, this is a quick presentation. I promise, the proposal this evening is to request council's approval of a consulting contract between Broomfield and Olson, Inc. The contract is to provide planning and public engagement services for a major update to the 2016 Broomfield Comprehensive Plan and the 2016 Broomfield Transportation Plan. Olson is an engineering and planning and design services firm that submitted a response to Broomfield's request for proposals for this project. Following an evaluation of the proposals, Olson was deemed best qualified to provide long-range comprehensive plan and transportation mobility planning services to Broomfield for the project. Next slide, please. So a little bit of background, the comp plan, as we call it, and the transportation plan or TMP, establish the community's vision and goals and policies for Broomfield's future with a 10 to 20-year horizon. They establish certain existing conditions and service overarching guiding policy documents for Broomfield. They're used by council, staff, the development community and the public to guide decisions regarding land use, transportation, mobility, programs and services, safety, funding and capital improvement projects, applying for grant funding among other purposes. The comp, the comp plan is required by state law and as you know, these plans were last approved in 2016 and they are typically updated approximately every decade. So it is timely for us to move forward with these updates. Next slide, please. A little bit of background on the prior phase. So in 2021, staff began the preliminary Phase One planning for the major updates to the two plans or the project. During this initial phase, we contracted with Cushing-Turrell for consulting services to scope innovations and best practices in long-range planning to help guide development of the scope of work for this project. In November of 2024, council held a study session to receive an update on the Phase One findings and recommendations of best practices and innovations. And during that meeting, council provided staff direction to move forward with Phase Two of the project, so comprising this major update of both plans. Next slide, please. So for Phase Two, we're currently just kind of ramping up to begin Phase Two. During the first quarter of 2025, staff pivoted to Phase Two, which is, to date, has included developing the project's scope of work and requests for proposals for these consulting services, posting the RFP on BidNet in February of 2025 for six weeks, evaluating the proposals submitted. And then in June, Broomfield issued a notice of intent to award a consulting contract to Olson for these services. So the consulting agreement is provided for your consideration of approval this evening. Next slide. So this, this slide presents a very high-level summary of the key project elements. The core project elements address project administration, the discovery phase, the desire phase, the discuss phase. There's a design phase and then a document phase. They call it the five Ds in their approach. You'll note that there are optional scalable elements that may be included such as translation services, public engagement with schools and a potential future dashboard. So for the key plan elements, they total $808,881. And for the optional scalable elements, if all are implemented, this would include up to an additional $59,100 in addition. Next slide, please. So in summary, the proposal is to approve the Phase Two consulting contract with Olson, Inc. for $867,981. If approved, the consulting services are expected to begin immediately with Olson's development of a public engagement plan in Q4 of this year. The Phase Two public engagement is expected to launch formally in early 2026, following council's selection of a, of the Comprehensive Plan Community Advisory Committee. And then the project is expected to be, to run through 2026 and to be completed by ideally October of 2027, following a robust public engagement process. This concludes my presentation and I have with me here this evening Sarah Grant, our Transportation Manager, and Ted Richard, who represents the Olson, Inc. consulting team.
Is that it? Okay. Now we'll proceed with public comments. If any, I love the brevity. Thank you, Ms. Merwin. If any residents are using the call-in service, do we have anybody online? We'll skip that. Next is in-person comments. Anyone want to be heard on this item? Wonderful. Questions from council are next. Members should limit themselves to questions. The time to introduce amendments and state positions for or against this item is later. Are there any questions from council? Next is council's consideration of Proposed Resolution Number 2025-112. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
7A, Proposed Resolution Number 2025-112, Approving a Consulting Agreement with Olson, Inc. for Phase Two of the Broomfield Comprehensive Plan and Transportation Mobility Plan Update Date.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Mayor Pro Tem Shaft?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Leslie?
Won't turn on. Yes, I second the motion.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, council members, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Marsh Holson, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. All council members have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes eight to zero. There we go. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Merwin. Next, under Action Items this evening is a Proposed Resolution Approving Broomfield's Participation in the Denver Regional Council of Governments, Denver Regional Council of Governments Regional Housing Needs Assessment and Directing Staff to Submit Comments. Council has a copy of the Agenda Memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Two nights in a row, Ms. Tess, or two nights in a row? It feels like two nights in a row. Please introduce us to this item. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Hoffman, Council, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Council. I'm going to just have our friend Jake in the back to skip to the last slide and make this really short and sweet. So Senate Bill 24174, known as the Sustainable Affordable Housing Assistance, was passed by the Senate and our current housing needs assessment was passed by the Senate, and our current housing needs assessment does not satisfy the requirements of this bill. Staff is recommending that council approve Resolution twenty-two-five, one-fourteen, which would allow the city and county of Broomfield's participation in Dr. Cog's Regional Housing Needs Assessment. Dr. Cog's assessment satisfies the state bill's requirements and would allow Broomfield to comply without incurring significant costs to update our own housing needs assessment. Utilizing the Dr. Cog assessment for state compliance does not limit our future use of Broomfield's existing housing assessment for local planning purposes. This concludes staff's presentation. We look forward to, uh, oh, this also refills the requirement of a public meeting, which is what we needed to have in order to, um.
That was in the memo.
Yes.
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 I read it.
Okay.
Um, and so thank you for the abbreviated slideshow. Um, that's good. So now we'll proceed with public comments. Anyone would like to comment on this item? Now's the time. Seeing none, any council questions or comments? Thank you. Then, uh, next is council's consideration of proposed resolution number twenty-two-five dash one-one-four. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Seven B, proposed resolution number twenty-two-five dash one-one-four, approving Broomfield's participation in the Denver Regional Council of Governments Regional Housing Needs Assessment and directing staff to submit comments.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Councilmember Leslie?
Thank you, Mayor. I move the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Henkel?
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, council, please cast your vote electronically. Uh, councilmember Marshall, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. All council members have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. And that passes unanimously nine to, to zero. Thank you, Ms. Tessier, for keeping us, uh, in compliance. Um, next, under action items this evening is the public hearing and council's consideration on second reading of a proposed ordinance related to approving civil enforcement in municipal court. I'll now declare the public hearing open. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you. And Courtney Teeman is, um, you're gonna hear her footsteps running this direction in just a moment.
I know. The, I'm sure she didn't think the last two items were gonna breeze by, but boy, did they.
Uh, and Brandon Murray, um, the good news is it's second reading, so this also will be a, a, a brief presentation, and we'll get right to the vote.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Manager Hoffman.
Honestly, don't work for you.
Uh, no, you don't, don't, don't run. You don't have to run.
And does that mean I have more time?
Yeah. You, you have time. Don't worry.
All right. Great. Um, hi, Courtney Teeman. I'm with the City Attorney's Office. Um, and I'm gonna talk to you about ordinance twenty-two-seventy-one. Um, Commander Kent Wychlatz is here from the Police Department to also add some information. Um, really, the theme here and the purpose behind this ordinance is efficiency. And so I will also tell you, I'm gonna read from my notes because it will be much more efficient and a quicker presentation. Um, so let's go. Next slide. So I'm gonna spend the next ten minutes or so talking to you about an enforcement tool for the laws that regulate property and animals in Broomfield. These laws are important because they most often play out in the spaces where citizens live, near people's homes and in their neighborhoods. Examples of the laws that this ordinance addresses include dogs running off leash, accumulation of junk on people's property, weeds growing out of control, junk vehicles parked and left on the street indefinitely, sidewalks not being shoveled, dog poop not being picked up, et cetera. Um, this ordinance is adopting a tool for city enforcement of these laws that will allow for a more efficient process to address violations, more efficient for city staff, but more importantly, more efficient for citizens. There are three main city departments that play a role in the enforcement of these laws. There's the Broomfield Police Department, um, the City Attorney's Office Prosecution Division, and then the Broomfield Municipal Court. The Broomfield Police Department plays the biggest role in this work. Um, and that's why Commander Wychlatz is here to give just a little bit of background about, um, their philosophy and what that part of the enforcement looks like.
Good evening. Uh, I apologize, Brandon isn't here tonight, and we changed the agenda a little bit, but he told me it was his anniversary. So I told him, you go be with your family. I'll pick this up and back up Courtney. So, next slide, please.
Oh, no.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm like, nervous. I'm like, I got it. So, um, as a commander, two of my units are code enforcement and then animal control. Um, so this really impacts both of those much. One thing we want to do with this is understand that this is not changing our philosophy at all. We still want to focus on compliance and education before getting into it. But as we will see on the next slide is, um, a couple of examples where the process for code enforcement has stretched out multiple months. And so it's not efficient. Um, the, uh, residents who are complaining or have issues with the code violations aren't getting resolution. We're trying to work with, um, the resident who has the problems. It's just still not getting in compliance. And so with this, we're hoping that the whole process moves much more efficiently, but we're still not gonna change our philosophy with trying to gain compliance before any enforcement. Um, and really with the police department, that's our goal. With any situation, even criminal violations, we'd love compliance long before we have to do enforcement. We just realized that isn't realistic all the times. Uh, next slide, please. So here's just two quick examples that, uh, Manager Murray put together, um, for you guys to look at. One case, um, involved, uh, an off-street parking, and then each of these cases, each example I'll talk about, had a detached trailer and off-parking and usually a weed or an improved surface violation that went with it. And so what extended the process out is, is we always start with a courtesy notice, which is just a friendly reminder that says, hey, um, we noticed this violation or this got reported, please fix it. They usually check that back within seven to ten days. Um, and if it's not corrected, then they issue the notice of violation, which is a very formal warning that says you have this amount of time, usually fifteen days on most of them, uh, to correct the violation or a summons could be issued. So in this one, with the three violations, um, the code enforcement officers contacted this person nine times, issued five different notices of violations. They were for different pieces. So they initially fixed, um, the off-street parking, but then there was still a junk vehicle, um, and an improved surface piece that they had to correct. So they're trying to be compliant and helpful with the resident. So they say this violation is in compliance, but you still have these two. So they're like, we'll give you another week to try and correct that. Then they correct one of the problems, but then not the third one. And so the code compliance officers, as opposed to an enforcement tool, they almost become case managers. Um, and so the process gets drawn out even longer. Um, the second example, uh, you'll see Brandon put in there that there's twenty-four months that this went on. Um, this is an example from one address, um, with the same detached trailer, kept going in and out. And then he would say, oh, well, my neighbor borrowed it and they parked it back there. So some of it was violations of, well, they drove and parked it there. It wasn't me. Um, so they played a little bit of a game throughout this entire contact. Um, but that, um, trailer was complained on for two years. Um, and then finally, um, a summons was issued. And then once they got the summons to court, they had it in compliance before they went to court. Um, and when Courtney talks about efficiency, one of the pieces is, um, that once we issue a summons, oftentimes the court date is a month to a month and a half out. Um, so then that delays it even another month before there's even a resolution. We hope that there's always compliance. Code officers are really good about right before that court day going out to check. If there is compliance then, so they can let the City Attorney's Office know for that court process. But those are just a couple of examples of how long and drawn out these processes can be. And I'll turn it back over to Courtney.
Thank you. So, next slide. Currently, when code, um, and animal services, right, the police department, when they're working with citizens, when they cannot obtain compliance with, um, management and communication, the process that they have available is to cite the individual into the municipal court and follow the criminal court, um, process and procedures. Next slide. So this process, although it's more efficient than a state court, right? That's what municipal court's supposed to be. Um, and, and it's appropriate for most of the offenses that come in. It's a fairly cumbersome process for these types of cases. Um, and addressing the ordinances that we have that we're addressing in this or the, the stat, the code provisions we're addressing in this ordinance. So from the first step of receiving a summons through to the close of the case, this will take somewhere between six, approximately six weeks and six months to close the matter. Um, and, uh, Commander Wychlatz is right. The summons dates are out six weeks, so when they, when the police give a summons, they're not gonna come into court even for six weeks. Often, the violation is continuing, um, that entire time, and so it's continuing to have the negative impact on the neighbors and the neighborhood. For the person who received the ticket, the court process requires at least one mandatory appearance into the municipal court, which could be anywhere from, you know, thirty minutes to a couple hours, depending on how big the docket is and how serious the other cases are on that docket. Um, so sometimes that means the person who's coming in for a dog-at-large ticket is, is behind some more serious cases and, and has some time to wait. All of this process, um, in addition to taking the time for the neighbors who are waiting for a resolution, um, and the person who received the ticket is of course taking and requiring the work of Broomfield staff. There's the Broomfield Police Department, um, the court staff, the city attorney prosecution, and the municipal court judge. Next slide, please. What proposed ordinance twenty-two-seventy-one does is it creates a simplified enforcement system. We know in many situations when an individual feels the fiscal impact of enforcement, they find the time and the ability to correct the violation. And we see that when they receive the ticket into court and then, and then the violation is corrected. Um, the sample cases shared by the police department illustrate that. So this ordinance creates an enforcement tool that sends that message without the time impact that the current system requires. Next slide. Um, so for reference, these are the code provisions that would fall into this administrative enforcement system. Um, so these are the code provisions that the Broomfield Police Department would have the ability to address violations through this simplified fine structure. Now, you will notice that there is one that is unlike the others. Um, all of them, almost all, except for one, are property or animal offenses. Uh, the one that's a little bit different is the marijuana and drug paraphernalia. And I want to highlight that for you because currently marijuana, um, and drug paraphernalia possession, um, in municipal courts, it's just paraphernalia for adults, but the maximum possible penalty is a hundred-dollar fine. It's the same in state court as well. And so it's really a minor offense, um, a minor offense, you know, per the maximum possible penalty. Um, and these are cases that oftentimes as well, the individuals who received the offense or the tickets failed to appear for court. And then, um, the cases remained open on the court docket and then they, and they penned out for a while. And so we did include this, um, in the civil administrative, uh, procedures because it, it, it just makes sense based on the possible penalty and kind of the outcome of the cases. There is a carve-out for juveniles, though, you will notice. Um, if a juvenile receives a citation for possession of marijuana or drug paraphernalia, they do still have a mandatory court appearance, um, which makes sense. It, it brings them and it brings their parents in together to talk to the prosecutor and talk to the judge about what's going on. Uh, next slide. So key aspects, what does this procedure process look like? It allows for a ticket with a set fine. That's very similar to traffic infractions. Um, there's no court appearance necessary. Uh, if the individual just wants to, to take accountability and move forward, they can simply pay it online or in person. Um, the ordinance also, though, preserves the ability to disagree with your citation and to present evidence at a hearing. Um, uh, to, you know, if you disagree. Um, and then finally, it's going to avoid warrants for failure to pay or appear in court, um, by allowing for default judgments to enter. And I'll talk about each of those things a little bit more. Next slide. Okay, um, so here you can see the efficiency of the proposed ordinance and how it would play out. For the person who receives the ticket, they can deal with the ticket, um, without an appearance into court. Um, so it takes no additional time. Uh, anybody, again, who has, right, the dog off-leash, uh, that receives the ticket and just wants to pay the fine and make sure they keep their dog on leash can just do that and save themselves that extra time. Um, however, if somebody disagrees with their ticket, again, they can be heard in court in an administrative hearing. So step two, um, pays the fine, you know, maybe it's two to four weeks and the case is closed. Alternative, they file the written notice, and they have to do that within fourteen days of receiving their citation. The court then, um, sets a, uh, a hearing on their docket within seven days and sends notice, um, to the appellant. And so that's gonna take approximately another thirty days, um, for the hearing to happen. The hearing is a simplified procedure, and so approximately somewhere between thirty minutes and ninety minutes. And then the case is closed because either, um, the court fines and impose, you know, imposes the fine, closes the case, or if they don't appear, in the current system, of course, it has to stay open. Oftentimes, a warrant is issued. Here, if they don't appear, a default judgment enters and the case is closed. Next slide. Um, here are the details, right? So the ordinance requires that, uh, the ticket received for the violations give individuals the information they need to understand the citation and the process. The ordinance defines how people will be notified of the ticket. Handing the ticket to the individual is the preferred method. However, if it is a property violation and, um, the individual is not there to have the ticket handed, code enforcement can mail the citation and, um, post it on the property. Next slide. Um, the code, um, and, um, sorry. The ordinance, um, sets a fine up to a thousand dollars, but allows.
Ms. Teeman, do you wanna take a little break? It's okay. Yeah, no, you got, you gotta, you gotta clear that out. Um, we, we can read.
And I did notice that Judge Bachman is here tonight.
I know, I saw her.
As well. Um, but anyway, so, um, the chief judge would set the fine schedule. Next slide. And although this ordinance, um, makes it easy to take accountability and pay the fine, it also preserves people's ability to disagree, as I noted. And it sets forth a simple hearing process, um, which makes the, um, individual's presentation of their, their side of the story, right, less cumbersome, more simple, more efficient. Um, next slide. Okay, finally, and I've, I'll just, I've said this a couple of times, all right, it allows for a default judgment, which is a far better alternative than, um, if a warrant is appropriate and the court could issue a warrant or a case just pending and not being able to close. Next slide. Um, okay, what's really important, and I, um, think council or Mayor Pro Tem Shaft asked this at the first reading, right, which is this ordinance preserves the discretion of law enforcement to either proceed forward in the civil, through this, um, civil enforcement system, or to write a citation into municipal court just as they can now. And there are going to be situations where that's the more appropriate, um, path forward. And as noted in the memo, it's sometimes when there's repeat offenders or there's more of a dangerous situation. It allows that, um, discretion to law enforcement. Next slide. So here's a brief summary. Um, it's just this ordinance is drafted to create a tool for efficiency, for efficiently enforcing simple provisions of the code. Its benefits center around efficiency, efficiency for city staff, the residents who have violated the code, and the residents that are impacted by those violations. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Teeman and Commander. Uh, we'll now proceed with public comments. If anyone would like to be heard on this item, please make your way to the podium. Seeing none, we'll go to questions from council next. Any questions from my colleagues? Mayor Pro Tem Shaft?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I just thought of this question, so I, uh, forgive me for kind of half making questions. So some of these, uh, some of these violations, uh, that, that are listed in the memo are things that have been done in the past and can't necessarily be correctable. So, uh, such things as animals running at large, right? That's not something I've, I, I can necessarily go back in time and correct my animal running off leash. However, I will do a better job of making sure my animal is on leash in the future. Uh, but some of these things, uh, like weeds and rubbish, for instance, uh, those may be an ongoing thing. So, um, you know, somebody could potentially get a ticket for that, but then could be able to correct it. But they, but then also they could pay that fine, but then there's still that code violation that's still hanging out there. Does that mean that they would then get another ticket in the future for still not taking care of those, uh, those weeds, even though they have, uh, they have paid that ticket?
Uh, that's exactly what it means. I mean, the, if, if the violation continues, law, I mean, code, code would continue to, to, um, presumably see the violation. Um, I don't, you know, it would have to be something that, that the police department is gonna figure out how they handle that. I don't foresee them receiving civil citation after civil citation after civil citation. I think that's the scenario. That's a perfect example of the scenario where the law enforcement officer needs discretion to say, okay, I gave you a citation. You know, you paid your fine. Thank you, but you didn't. Thank you, but you didn't take care of this. And so now we're gonna write you into court."
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions from council? I was gonna look it up, but I don't know what confinement during estrus is.
When the, uh, dogs are in heat.
Oh.
So, yes, they have to contain them so we don't have extra puppies.
The more you know. Uh, okay. Um, and I'm still trying to wrap my head around the 24-month thing. I'm like, we are way too lenient. It felt like, come on.
And, and it does happen. And again, where they're trying to get compliance and work with them. And, um, several of the residents that they work with have other hardships going on in their life, and so they don't want to be one more burden, um, sometimes, but it's like, "Hey, you still need to correct this." So, um, this will be something that just makes that happen.
We won't put our officers in that position to have to be caseworkers either.
Absolutely.
Awesome. Okay. All right. Then, um, any other questions? There being no further questions, the public hearing is closed. Next is council's consideration of proposed ordinance number 2271. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 2271, Creating An Administrative Process Allowing Civil Penalties For Certain Code Violations.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance on second and final reading and order it published by title? Councilmember Ward?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Henkel?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying no further discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on ordinance number 2271. Council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Marsh Holson, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. All council members have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously nine to zero. Thank you so much, Ms. Teeman. Get a cough drop. And thank you, Commander. Um, and we'll move on. The final item under action items this evening is council's consideration on first reading of a proposed ordinance related to trash hauler licenses. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Crystal Clemmons is at the podium. She's our city county clerk and recorder. Um, and she has backup this evening for any additional, um, legal-related questions. Mr. Clemmons?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. Uh, tonight, we are presenting ordinance number 2272, Transferring Trash Hauler Licensing To The City And County Clerk's Office. Next slide, please. For, um, clarification, ordinance number 2272 pertains to separate hauler licenses granted to businesses seeking to operate in Broomfield. It is unrelated to Waste Connection, the city's contracted waste hauler. We currently license 17 trash haulers, offering trash recycling, composting, and roll-off services to residential, commercial, and industrial customers. Um, city council has been hearing matters related to individual trash hauler licenses since the passage of ordinance 18 on July 23rd of 1962. In response to council's comments earlier this year, uh, staff has prepared the ordinance to streamline the individual trash hauler licensing process. Next slide, please. A, a brief summary of changes. Uh, the ordinance transfers approval of licenses from city council to the city and county clerk's office, transfers revocation authority to city council from city council to the local licensing authority, and modifies the fee structure by removing the specific fee amount from municipal code and authorizes the city and county manager or designate to establish fees through administrative action. The second reading and public hearing for, uh, the ordinance will be held September 9th, and this concludes staff presentation. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Clemmons. Next is public comment. If anyone would like to comment on this item, please make your way to the podium. All right. Council questions are next. Any questions from council? Excellent. Next is council's consideration of proposed ordinance number 2272. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
7D, Ordinance Number 2272, Transferring Licensing Responsibilities For All Trash Hauler Licenses From The City Council To The City And County Clerk's Office.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading and order published in full? Mayor Protem Schaaf?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Wynn?
I second this motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Saying no further discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on ordinance number 2272. Council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Marsh Holson, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
All council members and the kids have entered their vote and, uh, the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously nine to zero. Thank you, Ms. Clemmons and Mr. Heine. Um, so there are no mayor or council member requests for future action this evening. Is there any other business to come before the council from my colleagues or staff? There being no further...